Okay. It is seven o'clock. It is the Wellfleet Zoning Board of Appeals, March 12th meeting. And the first case is 2005 Todd and Lori LaBarge, an application for a special permit to replace an existing deck with a new screened-in porch. And the board will be Mr. Drucker, Mr. Heiliger, Mr. Ponte, and Mrs. Morrissey and me. So Bruce, Manny, Trevor, Janet, and Sharon.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ben Zender still. And I was actually just contacted by Todd LaBarge two days ago to ask if I could cover this hearing. Apparently, he thought the hearings were on Wednesday and he had it played out to Miami, so he couldn't make it. So he gave me the materials. I've looked at them. You may recall that we came before the board a number of years ago, seeking to make some changes to the property. The property is down, is right next to Fitzgerald's Auto Service on Briar Lane. You may recall it had multiple dwellings and a trailer in the back. What Todd and Lori want to do is actually remove that residential trailer, remove, I believe it's two sheds, and then take an existing deck and then make it into a screened porch. And you have the elevations, you have the plans, and I believe that they submitted also coverage calculations for the project, which indicate that there's actually a reduction in, there's a reduction in the amount of coverage from right now, with the existing house, three sheds and the trailer, it's 2,224 square feet of coverage. And by getting rid of, actually getting rid of one trailer, I'm sorry, one shed and the trailer, they're going to reduce it down to 1,658. It's still nonconforming as the sideline setback, which brings them in here, and I'm hoping that the board will see fit to grant the permit. And I'll answer any questions I possibly can, which is probably none.
Bruce, questions? Questions?
No questions.
Rita?
I got a trick one, though, if you really want.
No.
No, no questions.
Please.
Don't ask me a question, I can't answer honestly.
Rita? No. Manny?
I'm all set with this, I believe.
I am as well. We went down to the property, we looked at it, we met Mr. LaBarge, and I'm okay.
Thank you.
It looks like an improvement to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I'd actually point out that this appears to be a reduction in the intensity of use of the property, given that they're removing one of the, what now qualifies as a residential unit, the trailer.
And I agree. So, hearing no further discussion, do I have a motion to go to findings?
Do you want to go to the audience?
Oh, the audience. Does the audience have anything to say about this one? They don't even have the applicant here, much less any. And there were no letters, right? No letters on this one. All right.
I move that we go to findings, then.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
I think seconded.
Gianna? Okay.
Am I on?
Yeah, all right. This is my findings. This is an application for a special permit to replace the existing deck with a new screened porch, 19 feet, 5 inches from the side setback. The lot is in the CD District. The dwelling is a lawfully pre-existing, nonconforming structure, having been built in 1862, according to the assessor's office. The ZBA has inspected the subject lot and has reviewed all materials submitted with the application. The existing nonconformities regarding the structure are one-foot intrusion into the side setback. There will be a slight volumetric increase. There will be no change in use. There will be a decrease in use due to the removal of the trailer on the lot. The use conforms with the objectives of the Central District as stated in Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 3.2. There were no appearances or correspondence in support of or in opposition to the application. Roads, drainage, and other public services are adequate for the project. The project has received approval from the Conservation Commission. There will be a one-foot intrusion into the side setback. There will be a reduction in lot coverage from 11% to 8%. The alteration will not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. There will be an improvement to the neighborhood due to the removal of the nonconforming second dwelling on the property. Therefore, the proposed alteration will not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. And the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity after considering the district objectives for the district objectives as provided for in Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 3.2 and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.4.2, which I have spared you reading out in this particular case. That's not part of the findings. Do I have a motion to accept the findings?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Therefore, having accepted the findings, do I have a motion to grant the special permit?
Moved.
All in favor? That's right, we forgot to vote on those. Okay. All right, then I need to stamp a couple of things. Thank you.
Sharon, if you don't mind, would it be possible to have the applicant's copies just go back
with Chris to the office so that the applicant can pick those up with their bill?
Makes sense, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, Chris, you don't need to give me the, I guess I can put it with her.
You gotta take the cover off it.
Training a new.
That's what happens when you take my job.
Chris, how many of these do we need?
Three at least.
How many of these do we need?
We need a total of three stamps.
Total of three stamps, okay.
This site plan has all the calculations on it.
I would do them both, yeah.
I would also stand by the drawing of the structure.
Yeah, that was what I was going to ask you.
We've got three of those, but we need two.
Okay. Hmm.
We need one over there. Will, do you have one of the, the drawing of the structure?
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, that's one set. That's a total set. And you can set up while you're, while I'm doing all this paperwork, because I think you are the second case.
I am, I'm ready. But as much time as you want to take, I'll collect my thoughts.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just set the board, so you know who that is.
No, no, just a, I don't know if it's important that I hear you, but if you move the microphone closer, there's a 50/50 chance I might.
Testing. Is that better?
That's beautiful.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call this case and set the board, and then I'll continue this. This is 1708, an amendment from Sun Valley Trust. Applicant seeks to relocate retail space to the east rather than the west, add interior partitioning to the west side of the ground floor to allow space for retail home goods, gift business, and a retail ice cream coffee shop, and three, install a commercial kitchen in the basement. And the board will be myself, Bruce, Trevor, Manny, and Will.
Thank you again. I'm Ben Zender, and I'm here on behalf of Sun Trust, which is Olaf and Angie Valley, my client. And you may recall, this was the old post office property, then it was the real estate office, and then an art gallery, and it burned, and it was a slab for a while, and Olaf and Angie bought it, came before this board for a permit to reconstruct and to put in the dwelling on the top floor, and put the retail space on the first floor with a coffee shop and retail. In doing the build-out, they've, you know, changed what they'd like to do with the building a little bit. The first change they're requesting, which I'm not sure really needs to come back to this board, but they're essentially, they want to flip the coffee shop to the back instead of the front, and they want to add an ice cream component to that. Doesn't change the, it doesn't change the size of the structure, it doesn't change the parking calculations, it doesn't change anything about that, but they'd like to do that, put a little partition on the, on the right side shop to separate the retail space from the ice cream and coffee store. The second change that they'd like to make is they'd like to add in the basement a 200-square-foot commercial kitchen. And what that means is that it's a commission, it's a kitchen that people can come into and can do cooking to prepare food products that are then transported off-site and sold, bakery products, and I forget what the other one is, Olaf.
Vegan.
Vegan, vegan food and bakery products. So it would involve people coming to the site, no more than three employees would be down there, would, would prepare foods to go off-site. So that would actually increase the parking requirements by one space. I think that is probably the closest to a restaurant use, which is one space for every three employees. There wouldn't be any patrons coming to the property in connection with that, but we're asking that the board approve that additional use without requiring any additional parking, understanding we're in the Central District, where parking is compromised, and we have restaurants in the Central District that have no parking. So if you have any questions about, about the intentions of the use of the property, or even the building as constructed now by Olaf and Angie, Olaf can hopefully answer those for you, and thank you for hearing us.
Your honor, sir.
Do you want me?
Sure.
Don't you have any letters?
Oh, no letters. Wait, I don't, I should probably ask about the audience. Does anyone here from the audience just speak to this?
Kathleen Bacon, Wellfleet Select Board. I would ask the board support this. I know it's, you know, kind of, we're maxing out the use at this particular site, but if you look at what's happening on Main Street, we're losing businesses. He's creating business, and he's, he's doing it in a very, kind of phased and thoughtful way. So I would hope the board would support his application to, you know, move to a commercial kitchen, which I'm assuming is going to be servicing possibly food trucks that go off to other places. You know, he's not going to be, those goods are not going to be sold, you know, from that commercial kitchen at that site. Parking is compromised no matter where you are in town, but I think anytime we can add business and support business in the center of Wellfleet, we need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience on this one?
You want me to go?
Now you can go, yes.
The problem with your request is the zoning bylaw. I think you know that. And Kathleen makes a good point, but you need to change the zoning bylaw to accomplish it. But I want to back up for a few points. This was originally, this is a property that's about 50% the size that's required for a buildable lot. This was originally a single-use property, a post office. It then became a single-story retail, very low-impact art gallery and real estate office. That burned down in 2015. In 2017, we granted the special permit, allowing substantial expansion of the prior existing building and prior existing use. We allowed a second story, further intrusion onto the setbacks, and two retail uses. Our findings said there wasn't even enough parking for what we allowed. We let it go. We really didn't have authority to let it go, because parking under the Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw is pure formula. There's no such thing as a variance for parking or anything like that, but we let it go. Now, the request is to add two more uses, one of them in the basement, divide a single use on the first floor into two uses with no additional parking. And frankly, if it's just 200 square feet, and the diagram shows the whole basement, it's actually, and three employees, it's actually two additional parking spots you need. But the real problem with the commercial kitchen, it's not an allowed use in the Central District. It's not one of the listed uses. It's not an analogous use, except if you wanted to stretch, you could say it's a drive-in restaurant, which is a prohibited use in the Central District. So the fundamental problem, aside from parking, is that this is not an allowed use in the Central District. And while, you know, we'd like to support a lot of uses, throwing five uses into this property, I'll say a plain, it's just too much. And I understand the owner wants to, you know, maximize the use, but that's why the zoning bylaw was written, to, to put the brakes on too many uses. So I'm okay with what he's done on the first floor. By the way, I call this a forgiveness petition, not a application. He's already done the moving on the first floor. I'm okay with it, but I don't think you can have the commercial kitchen. I don't think it's an allowed use, and there isn't parking. We're constrained by the zoning bylaw. If the desire is for a commercial kitchen in the Central District, the bylaw needs to be amended. If the desire is to give this board discretion on parking, the bylaws need to be amended, but otherwise, we have to follow them. So I'm okay with everything except the commercial kitchen in the basement, but I wanted to explain my reasons.
Thanks, Bruce.
Rita?
No comments.
I have the same concern. As Bruce stated, the use is not allowed. So I guess I would have to say, I couldn't vote for this, but the rest is fine. What I, and this has nothing to do with it, just driving by there, if you could just paint that railing with that, that I guess the town owns that property, you use part of it for your electrical to go on the ground. It would be nice if you could just clean that up and paint it. That's it.
May I make one comment before we get all the way down the line, because it may alter way people think about this. I have to disagree with Bruce in one respect. The zoning bylaw lists in the Central District as allowable by special permit, restaurant indoor. Restaurant, drive-in, obviously, but a drive-in restaurant is, is something different, that's where you, so it allows restaurant indoor, and when you look at the permitted uses.
But this isn't an indoor restaurant. It's not analogous to an indoor restaurant. Saying it doesn't make it so, it just isn't.
Well, if I may, if I may finish.
Sure.
A drive, there's, there's an indoor restaurant, a drive-in restaurant, a fast-food restaurant, and a formula restaurant. It's not a formula restaurant, it's not a fast-food restaurant, and it's not a drive, I don't believe it's a drive-in restaurant. I think that has to do with people driving cars onto the lot and getting their food. It most closely, as far as restaurants go, it's most closely an indoor restaurant. But what the zoning bylaw says, it says that, it says, "Any use not listed as a permitted use in Section 5.3 shall be deemed a prohibited use, except that a use not listed in Section 5.3 may be allowed by special permit as provided for, provided the board determines that the use closely resembles in its neighborhood impacts a use listed as permitted or authorized under special permit." And in this one, where people are coming in, they're taking deliveries of food products, they're preparing that food, they're cooking that food, it differs from an indoor restaurant only in that patrons aren't coming to the property to buy the food. So I think it resembles those impacts, but it has lighter impacts than an indoor restaurant. So I think the board has the authority, I'm not saying you'll make the findings, but I think you have the authority to say that this commercial kitchen resembles an indoor restaurant in terms of its neighborhood impacts, and that you will grant a special permit for that use. So I just wanted to get in there before everybody made up their mind. Thank you.
So noted. Janet?
Well, I agree with you, Ben.
Thank you.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
My issue, since I agree with you on that, is the parking. And I'm concerned about how many more cars will be coming in and out of here, and at what times. Do you have, through you, through your client, through Sharon, however we want to do this, do you have any idea who, how many cars or food trucks would be coming in, and at what times?
I mean, I don't have full ideas, because I need, we would need approval before I get leases and all that kind of stuff signed. But I will say, the people that are, that are interested in kind of sparking this conversation from happening, or to happen, are not food trucks, but they are, they're actually people who are represented at the Wellfleet Farmers Market as well as other places. So they are not, they're actually very low-impact, kind of starting up businesses that are, you know, one of them is from Wellfleet, and then the other person is from Easttown. So they, you know, this all came about because the way that I had understood it was with the coffee shop, we were granted this 20 seats for that, the handling of that. With they, with that coffee shop not using, utilizing that, that amount of usage at all, I thought that we would, might be able to kind of reuse that whatever down, add for the commercial kitchen.
If I may, then, let me clarify something. I was looking at the plans that were done in, I think, 2016.
Yep.
You were, you were granted a coffee shop, right?
Yes.
You were granted two retail spaces and a coffee shop, so.
That's correct.
So you're not really asking for a new, the coffee shop is not new, you just want to add ice cream to it. Is that not correct?
Yeah.
And a partition, was there not going to be a partition originally?
That is, yeah, the partition was not there.
Right.
It was an open space.
So really, you're not changing the use at all, and that, you're really just asking for a commercial kitchen and to flop the uses and to put a partition up.
So honestly, what I'm trying to do is, is with the initial plan, with everything, sick day, art, you know, the business I own was doing well, and we were growing, and we wanted to open up the opportunity for new things and that kind of stuff. And as we are finishing this project, these lovely big fish with big teeth came into the picture and dropped our sales massively. So at the end of last season, we went back to the drawing board and tried to figure out, how can we make this still a viable, you know, thriving business in Wellfleet? And, and honestly, what we had to, we came to a conclusion, we had to downsize. So we weren't, we're not able to, you know, venture into doing the coffee thing on our own anymore. We were, that was going to be part.
We're going to do it, okay.
Yeah, it was our ownership, but a separate entity. And now, so through all those conversations, this kind of led us to where we are today.
I don't get a vote, because I'm not sitting on this board, but I definitely sympathize with what you're trying to do. I had one more question. Is there any possibility that people who would be using this commercial kitchen would be using it during, let's say, off-hours, like at night, or, so maybe the parking wouldn't be as much of an issue?
Yeah.
Very early in the morning, perhaps?
I mean, for sure, you know, we could def, the bakery, for instance, the person doing bakeries, they would be doing that majority of that in the very early morning, or late evening, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions. One is, I want to compliment you on your, your ingenious word, putting in the word amendment, because I'm not sure there's a, there's a way to amend a special permit. You either apply for a new special per, a new special permit. Is there, did I miss something in my reading of the ordinance, or did you just think if you put that in, we're a bunch of hayseeds, and we wouldn't really go look and see what's been done in the past?
No. No, no, there's a couple of things. First of all, we've, we've used amendments as, as a device for this board over the course of the years. We don't do them a lot, but I like them because, first of all, you keep the same file number, you keep the same file. And you'll notice when you look at your docket, this is a 1708 docket number. It makes it much easier for us to work with the same file, both in the town hall and in our own thing, as a single thing. I think in terms of the authority to grant or amend a special permit, it doesn't change the quantum of the vote, it doesn't change the burden of proof, it just, for me, it's a continuation of a prior discussion about what you did, and it, and it makes it much easier for everybody to understand when they pull that file, what they're working with. So, but, well, it's, I've had this conversation over the last 20 years of, would you do it as amendment or a new permit? Sometimes we do it as a new permit, sometimes we do it as an amendment. I like amendments, personally.
I guess my thought is that, you know, I'm concerned about the, about the parking and a double standard. I mean, the last folks on the agenda tonight, they first came, came in, and we held their feet to the fire on parking.
Right.
And I don't see why we should hold their feet to the fire on the parking and not you folks. I mean, it's a bylaw, there's nothing that gives us the, the option to say, eh, you know, you're a local person, you know, I've been around, eh, we, we won't look at it. So, I mean, I don't know why we didn't get a, a parking plan with the parking calculations, just like we required for the pot shop in the South Wellfleet General Store.
Well, the, first of all, there is a parking plan. The site plan you have clearly delineates the parking, it clearly delineates the moving area, which is one long line, so it's there.
But does it have the three more spaces, or the two more spaces that are required by the commercial kitchen?
No, it doesn't. It, well, it will be one more space. Look, there's no commercial kitchen listing in your parking table, but, but for restaurant, it's one space for every three employees. So, I'm sorry, it's one for every employee and one for every three customers. No, we haven't. We're asking the board to waive that, and the last permit that was granted, the board agreed to less parking. The board has, on a fairly regular basis, heard arguments about parking and waived parking requirements, and in my memory, they have.
Well, I guess maybe I'm sensitive on it, because I just spent the last 18 months on the parking committee. And one of the few recommendations we have to the, to the select board was no parking in violation of our ordinance. And we said, well, you guys didn't do much. Well, that's one of, one of the recommendations we made, and gee, you come here, and the first thing we have is you want us to waive it.
I understand, but look, look, this is the Central District. The Lighthouse Restaurant, you know, we're familiar with it, right? It's no longer a restaurant, has no parking. It has, it has absolutely no parking. So many of those businesses have no parking, and if you begin to treat every business, if somebody wants to.
Ben, if I could interrupt you. That's in the Main Street Overlay District, where there's authority of this board to waive the parking requirement.
I understand that.
Which we did do, by the way, which we did do for that use. Olaf happens to be one street over from the Main Street Overlay District. Can't get that waiver.
I understand that, but the dynamic is still the same, meaning that people that are coming to sick day, if they can't find a parking space there, they can park at the cross from the church, they can park at the town hall, they can park where everybody else parks to use the center of the district. You're right, there, but for the fact that that zoning line runs at Holbrook Avenue, this property would be within that. So I'm just suggesting that this board has the authority to, to waive their, and if you don't, you don't. You don't, you don't allow them to do it, so. But I don't think whether you do or don't approve this commercial kitchen is going to change in any way, shape, or form, the way that that property is used, or the way that you see it used on the ground in, in the course of the summer, so.
Trevor?
May I ask a question?
May, I just going to ask a question about how this kind of is playing out, because
I'm wanting to understand. If, you know, this, this is not, you know, we don't approve a commercial kitchen, and going forward with, everything else is approved as normal, what is, is there anything preventing the coffee and the ice cream shop to install a commercial kitchen and operate their business with one? Because my understanding was there's, there isn't, but I want to clarify that as I'm going into these things.
You want, I'm sorry, you want a, a kitchen in the coffee shop?
The question is whether, if, if Olaf and Angie constructed this kitchen in the basement, didn't lease it out for, as a commercial kitchen for other people to use, and if, for example, the coffee shop or the ice cream shop went downstairs and used the kitchen to prepare food and bring it upstairs, whether that would require a trip back.
You want to move the coffee shop downstairs?
No, no, the service area for the coffee shop downstairs. So, you know, in the same way that the basement of this building is going to hold retail items for sale, it's going to hold, I'm guessing, the coffee cups and the cans and all that will be downstairs, so that's the question. I've thought about that, I haven't tried to answer that question.
Interesting idea. But, you know, this whole thing falls under the heading of no good deed goes unpunished. We cut a lot of slack back in 2017. I mean, we granted three uses on the property, granted more intrusion, we really overlooked the inadequate parking, and now you want more. You know, if you can come, you know, you're imaginative, if you come up with something, maybe it's a board of health issue where the kitchen goes, deal with it then. But I really do believe if folks want, you know, commercial service kitchens, or Kurt called it a commissary kitchen.
That's what we call it.
You know, if you want those sort of things, get the bylaw amended. I don't write the bylaw, I have to follow it. You know, make it a permitted use. I don't really care one way or the other, but now, I disagree with you. I don't believe it's a permitted use in the Central District. And I do believe that we should not be allowing another use that requires more parking when there's already inadequate parking. That's all. I mean, I, I would like to see this business be successful, which is why I looked the other way, when, last time, I didn't say anything about the parking, because I was, you know, happy to see the property put to use, but, you know, as I said, no good deed goes unpunished.
That's the history of Wellfleet. I mean, look, incremental development of properties in Wellfleet is the norm, it's not the exception.
Well, we're okay with everything on the first floor, he's already done it, I'm not going to tell him to undo it.
If there was a range in the first plan, then I wouldn't see where that would be a problem to move it to the basement. If you could come up with some kind of evidence that shows.
Have we already approved that?
I don't think there is.
Well, look, we're not here asking you, look, it, I think the question's premature. We're not here saying we want to build a kitchen in the basement to service the coffee and the ice cream store. My own sense is that if we did want to do that, we would go to the building inspector, we would ask him whether or not that was in fact an intensification of the use or not. If he says it is, as you may well, we would come back and say, okay, instead of just storing cups and saucers in the basement, we want to actually heat up the biscuits or whatever down there.
Have we already approved that?
I don't think there is.
Well, look, we're not here asking you, look, I think the question's premature. We're not here saying we want to build a kitchen in the basement to service the coffee and the ice cream store. My own sense is that if we did want to do that, we would go to the building inspector, we would ask him whether or not that was in fact an intensification of the use or not. If he says it is, as you may well, we would come back and say, okay, instead of just storing cups and saucers in the basement, we want to actually heat up the biscuits or whatever down there or prepare the food that gets served upstairs. I don't think that changes the parking, I don't think that changes theoretically, I don't think it changes the customer count.
But if you, if you are serving food trucks, you know, we went through.
Nobody's serving food trucks, man. That, nobody has suggested, we're not, nobody's looking to do that. That's, nobody's asked to do that. That just got mentioned by, yeah, by Kathy. So it's, the first question I asked Olaf, I said, what's the purpose of the kitchen? Is it food trucks? And, you know, food truck backing up and loading up every night is a very, very different enterprise than the coffee shop going downstairs and baking something to serve upstairs. So, but that's not before you. What's before you right now, I believe, is the commercial kitchen question. And the second question is, you know, A, does he need zoning relief to flip-flop this floor plan, you know, or change the interior partition for the floor plan, you know, for adding the ice cream? And if you think that it does and you're willing to grant a special permit, we would be very, very happy.
He's just flopping everything.
Did you get to finish?
I don't really, I don't have any questions. And I don't think I have anything new to add. I completely agree with Bruce. The problem is, I also completely agree with Ben. I think they both make good arguments and I'm not really even sure how I'm going to vote.
You want a coin?
But Ben, I did want to clarify one thing. We are adding a third use on the first floor. When we permitted this before, we permitted retail space on one side.
Yes.
And a coffee shop on the other.
Yes.
Now we have a retail space plus a retail space plus a coffee shop.
Okay, let me.
So we are adding a third thing here.
The plan shows two retail spaces.
But one was going to be the coffee shop, coffee bar in the front, yeah.
Coffee shop space, retail space two, retail space one.
No, Sharon.
Mm-hmm.
That's not true. The, as I look at the approved plan and the proposed plan, I look at this, on the south side of the property, which would be closer to Holbrook Avenue, there's retail space one.
Retail one.
Which is roughly half of the building area, a little less. And then, on the north side, there's retail space two, which includes a coffee shop space towards the street.
Yeah.
Now it's shown as retail space two towards the street and the coffee and ice cream shop towards the back.
Yeah, but the findings say the applicant proposes a retail and coffee shop use on the first floor and a five-bedroom dwelling on the second floor. Doesn't say two retail spaces and a coffee shop, it says a retail space and coffee shop. It may well be, and we stamped the plans, I just wanted to make it clear that I think we all had the notion that this was two businesses and that was part of our parking configuration, was that it was two businesses. And if it's three businesses, there's more employees and there's a larger parking configuration.
And I have to agree with you. Based on what Olaf has just testified, I think you're right, he's saying now he's going to lease out the ice cream store, the coffee shop for somebody else. You're absolutely right about that.
Yeah. So that was, that was my one question about it. And the other, and, you know, I think where we are, you know, hung up is on, you know, then to add another use on the bottom, now we really are adding to that parking and that. And I am concerned, and it is one thing I wanted to talk to Olaf about since I had him in front of me, is that I live near there. And people, delivery trucks come into the front of there and back out of there, and people come in and park there. It's not well marked in the front. I remember when we had this, Roger said, you're going to have to be very careful because of the situation, the dangerous situation of the sidewalks and traffic across that front. And the parking is supposed to be all in the back except for handicapped, but it's not well marked and people do deliver and work trucks come in and work on the property there, and it's not safe. It really isn't. So it is something you need to address.
I 100% agree, and it is something that we have been continually trying to address. The biggest problem is that we're not finished, you know, the construction isn't finished, so we haven't been able to do that final landscaping. But you see, like, all summer long, we put a big bench in front blocking that area completely off, which was less than ideal for the, you know, the very rare wheelchair needed access, but we just ran out and moved things in that case, so. I 100% agree with you, and we do have final plans with landscaping to resolve that completely. It's just one step at a time and funds are something to be dealing with.
And Ben, to your point, I don't think that, for the question of number one, moving them from one side to the other, no, I don't think you need zoning relief.
That makes any difference.
It makes no difference which side it is, but the actual, the second one, which is that there's a second use in that area, and then the third one, the commercial kitchen are the two that would have come to us.
Yeah, I have a suggestion, just a thought. I guess I know, obviously, I know how Bruce is going to rule, and I know how I'm going to rule based upon what we've said. Query whether you might want to amend your application right, you know, verbally here and take out the kitchen, and then I'd be happy to approve everything else.
Absolutely, absolutely, we would just strike the kitchen from the, strike the kitchen from the plan and ask to amend the application and remove the request for the commercial kitchen in the basement.
You're withdrawing that part of the application for the commercial kitchen in the basement?
Well.
Without prejudice?
At the risk of drawing wills out, I'm asking to be able to amend the application to withdraw the request for that.
You're looking to amend the amended application. For you, we'll do anything, you know that.
I know, but, you know, I think it's the cleanest way to do it because I'm not sure we can withdraw without prejudice on part of a petition. So I would ask the board to consider.
All right, so we'll move, I'll move to amend the application to eliminate the request for a commercial kitchen in the basement.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's fine, but then what are they really applying for?
So you won that argument.
They're applying for the second use in that.
Second use.
They've actually got three places.
We said they didn't need.
No, 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 it's not the movement, it's the fact that there are three things there.
Okay.
There are three things. There were two, and now there are three.
Okay.
So that's a parking thing that we're going to try to avoid even thinking about. So, are you ready to close the hearing and go to findings? Does anybody have any other questions? For anybody?
I think we all said.
Okay, then I need a motion to move, close the hearing and go to findings.
I move we close the hearing and go to findings.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Okay, Bruce.
Okay. Wrote them before he amended, so I'll try my best. He did that, excuse me.
Oh, good deed goes.
You know that. Okay. One, applicant Sun Valley Trust seeks to amend special permit 1708 to relocate the Sick Day retail space to the east side rather than the west side of the building's ground floor to add interior partitioning to the west side of the ground floor to allow space for a retail home goods/gift business and a retail ice cream/coffee shop. The ZBA has inspected the property and has reviewed the application and all documents submitted with the application. The property is in the central zoning district. The property is nonconforming as to lot area being approximately 10,900 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required, and is nonconforming as to street frontage with 67 feet of frontage on West Main Street where 125 feet is required. In 2015, the then existing one-story structure on the property consisting of a retail gallery and real estate office was destroyed by fire. There currently exists on the property a two-story structure and basement constructed pursuant to special permit 17-08. Special permit 17-08 granted the applicant permission to build a two-story structure, which was nonconforming as to the east side yard setback being 13.4 feet, where 20 feet is required, west side yard setback being 11.2 feet, where 20 feet is required, and lot coverage being 19.4%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. Additionally, special permit 1708 provided for 15 parking spaces, where 22 spaces were required by Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 6.3. Got to cross some stuff out. Okay, I'm crossing out a lot of stuff, so we can get through. The board finds that relocating the ground floor Sick Day retail space to the east side of the ground floor of the building and adding interior partitioning to the west side of the ground floor to allow space for a retail home goods/gift business and retail ice cream/coffee shop will not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing approved uses. And the applicant has demonstrated that the benefits of that, of the proposal for the ground floor will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity after considering the district objectives for the district as provided floor in Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 3.2 and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.4.2. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Good. All right, I have a motion to accept the findings.
Still move to accept.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Aye.
And I'll move to grant the special permit based upon the findings.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, Ben, I don't know if I, do we need to stamp one of these?
I would stamp this one drawing.
Okay.
The ground floor.
Ground floor.
Sharon?
Yeah.
You should put an X on the, on the.
Exile the basement.
Commercial kitchen.
Okay.
So he doesn't have to redo.
Just stamp the one drawing.
Not going to get it anyway.
I would suggest that you.
That's an old one, I think.
I think, I think.
I would suggest that you exile the basement and have the board stand it until that.
Okay, all right, yeah, good idea.
The whole other plan.
All right, so this is the.
Then you can come back again.
This is the retail space.
Pardon me?
Here's the basement, which we're going to X out.
That's okay.
And see.
I know.
Go to the building.
I'm the boss hanky of this board.
This is this.
But you know, the funniest thing, Bob would say, what did he say? Roger's never repeated what he said. He told me what he wanted. How about this?
Okay, so then this is a set.
Do you have enough plans, Sharon?
I might need one more.
There you go, this is one.
I need both of them, I want the, I want the, both floors.
Oh.
Ben, do you guys need a copy of this one?
The one that shows the basement.
Oh. That's the basement.
Here.
Well, I'll be holding.
There you go. Thank you. Is that it? Okay.
Starting to sweat. Get the tuffin.
All right. Here.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy.
Here's another set. Sharon, I just did. Yeah. I know, I'm just about gone. Paper is flowing, and then I'll call the next case. Oh. It's better to get up. Make sure I can still move. Okay. All right, these are, I'm going to call these as three, as a little threesome here. This is 2002, 2003, and 2004, Rispoli Ventures. Either a special permit or variance to construct an art installation within pre-existing nonconforming yard setback from La Count Hollow Road. And the board will be Bruce, Manny, Trevor, myself, and Ritha.
Great.
Now, we've already seen this one.
Yes.
So what I would say, suggest in the interest of time is tell us what's different from what we've seen before.
Okay, great. So thank you, good evening, Eliza Cox for the record, joined by Chloe Rispoli to my right, couldn't find a sitter tonight, so she's learning about civic government. We, as the board will recall, last summer submitted essentially the first two applications that are listed on your agenda to install an art installation, which is an Eiffel Tower on the PB Boulangerie Bistro property. At the time of the hearing last summer, there was some question from the board as to whether or not this is a structure under your bylaw or a sign under your bylaw. The first two applications are filed in the alternative that assume that this is a structure but not a sign, and it gives two different options to grant the required relief for the Eiffel Tower. The third application is a new one that we haven't discussed, and that is relief from the sign requirements if in fact this is a sign. If it is a sign under your bylaw, then no relief is required from the setback requirements because the bylaw provides that signs can be up to, has to be two feet from the property line, so that would no longer require relief from setback. Last summer, we filed the sign application, but then ended up withdrawing everything without prejudice, so we never actually had a conversation with the board regarding the sign application. It's my position, and remains my position, that this is not a sign under your bylaw. And I would ask the board if they have the bylaw in front of them to turn to the definition of sign, which is contained in section 7.2.1, which provides any display of, and then it lists a bunch of different things. There's no lettering that's proposed on this Eiffel Tower, there are no logos, there's no pictorial matter, there are no flags, there are no banners. I think what the board focused on at the last meeting was whether this was an object. But the way I read the language of your zoning bylaw, it says any display of objects. This is not, I would suggest, a display of objects, this is a single structure, which I think differentiates it from being a sign. And I think frankly, if the board finds that this is a sign, it kind of opens a Pandora's box in town as to what is and isn't a sign. I have some photographs that I just pulled off the internet of many of the commercial buildings in Wellfleet. There's, you know, Max Shack down in Wellfleet, which has the boat and the lobster. If this is a sign, that's a sign. Moby Dick's has lobster pots on the roof. If this is a sign, those are signs. The inflatable shops that are up and down Route 6, if this is a sign, those are all signs. So I would suggest to you, the way this is intended to be read, this is not a sign, this is a single structure that's on the property, and therefore relief is needed under either 2002 or 2003, which are filed in the alternative. If the board thinks this is a sign, we did submit variance relief from the sign requirements, and that would be the height and the area of the signage. I do think, regardless of whether this is a sign or a structure, to the extent of variance is needed, those variance conditions exist here on this property. The property is irregularly shaped, it has frontage on two roads, there is a wetland that takes up a significant portion of the site. There's also a pretty dramatic change in topography on the site, such that really the only place that this can be sighted outside of the wetland buffer area and an area that's relatively flat is where it's proposed right now, without having, which at substantial cost, to redesign a parking lot or interfere with the parking spaces. And finally, in terms of no detriment, as I think everyone knows, Philippe takes tremendous care in the aesthetic of his building and the landscaping. This is an amenity and an art installation that he thinks is important and attractive. We already own it, it's sitting in our yard. If you have, want to see it, you're welcome to come to our house, it's in three pieces right now, having been shipped over from an artist in France who made it. But there's no impact on traffic, there's no impact on parking, there's no impact on stormwater, there's no impact on wastewater, there's very little impact. And when you look at the aesthetic of this property, and in particular, the surrounding community, I would suggest there's no impact in terms of design or consistency with the area. So I think, you know, the first question for the board is whether or not this is a sign, and as I indicated, we suggested it's not, but happy to have that conversation and go from there.
Is there anyone from the audience who wants to speak to this?
Yeah, Chef really wants this, so I hope you'll, you know, you'll see to it that he can have his Eiffel Tower and that we can all say, you know, Wellfleet has an Eiffel Tower, you know? Thank you.
And people should come to the microphone and introduce themselves.
These folks are my neighbors.
And your name?
Oh, I'm Richard Blakely. These folks are my neighbors. These folks are my neighbors, I work with them daily. And I've never had a better working relationship, or relationship period, with a family. They cared deeply about South Wellfleet. And, as you know, Philippe is from France, and if he'd like to look out and see an Eiffel Tower, then goddamn it, I'm all for that Eiffel Tower. And, uh, that's it.
Thank you. Take your time.
My name is Michael Moran, I own the property right next door, 25 Le County Hollow. Philippe's done a lot of things, and he tries to be very sensitive to my needs. I'm not really familiar with exactly what you're trying to do. My only concerns would be if it's extremely high, and if it's lit. I'm concerned about light pollution. And so if the sign is taller than your restaurant, I'm not even sure where you're putting it. But I'd ask that if you do approve it, that it would be turned off at like nine o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben's under. Couple of points, first of all, I was really interested in this question when it first came up, and so I did a little research and asked around, and, and I kind of came up with a theory about what, when something becomes a sign for a business. And that cutoff point is when that object so describes what you're selling, that it's interrelated to what that is. I'll give you an example, you have, you have a, a donut shop that hangs a donut out front. You know, there's certain types of objects that people put out front. This doesn't fall into that, this isn't something, you know, if somebody were driving by and saw an Eiffel Tower, they wouldn't, they wouldn't say, well, you know, they're selling towers out in this place. So it, it doesn't relate in that way. It may help Philippe get some business, and we all hope that it does do that. But we all know Philippe, we all love him, and Philippe, he doesn't do things because he wants to get more people in his restaurant, he does it because he loves it. He, he, he just, he has loved this Eiffel Tower since the first time he read about it and saw it and laid eyes on it. And it's something that's, it's a curio, it's the kind of thing that people remember when they leave Wellfleet. And so I don't think it's a sign. I think Liza has, you know, those, we all know the site very, very well. It's, it's a compromised site in terms of its topography, it's compromised in terms of locating things. And where they're proposing to put this just works. And if people drive by and see an Eiffel Tower and want to go in and have a meal, I think that's wonderful. And I hope you finally, finally put this to bed, thank you.
Good evening, my name is John Nealon, I'm here with my wife Lorraine. We own a couple of properties on the Count Hollow Road, just up the street from the bistro and the, and the bakery. And we were here at the last meeting when you considered the initial proposal. I spoke a little bit at length then, in support of it, at that time, in the, in the spirit of time tonight, I know you have a busy agenda. I'm not going to repeat those comments, but I would summarize by saying we're fully in support of the request before the board. And to reiterate some of the other comments made, our experience with, let me back up. We probably passed the bistro and café more times than arguably most people in Wellfleet, because we have a place right up the street. We're here in this beautiful town very often, all year long, and we pass it all the time. All the improvements that we've witnessed that have been made to the property have been first-rate with care, and, you know, due diligence in terms of how they're done, and we would expect nothing less with this proposal. And again, we would ask the board to support the request by the petitioner, thank you.
I'm Thelma Blakely, also a neighbor. And Philippe has always been a fantastic neighbor. And when they first opened the bistro there, we live right across the street, and I think one of the refrigerators was loud or something, so we just said, hey, you know, we, we can hear it from the house. And he's like, no problem, we'll take care of it, put a fence around it, end of problem. Everything over there is done really tastefully, it looks nice, it's always, you know, sparkling clean. Like I said, he's a great neighbor, and I support it.
Anyone else? All right. You want me to start with Will this time?
Pymmy?
You want me to start with Will this time?
No, he'll get mad at me.
Okay.
And, uh, I'll tell you what I think, and I hate to say with Chloe here. Chloe, your mother does a great job. She almost has me convinced that this isn't a sign. But, uh, you know, the problem is something can be an art object and also a sign. And if it's a sign, it's too big under the zoning bylaw, because our zoning bylaw is just a dimensional deal. You know, it has to be a certain size. It fits the definition of a sign, I'm not going to go back and forth with you and read it, we, we can do that. I mean, you can think of the barber pole in front of barber shop, the wooden Indian in front of the tobacco shop. Go back to biblical times, you have the sign of the cross or the fish to designate Christians in ancient Roman times. A sign doesn't always have lettering, and our bylaw is written to prohibit signs of a certain size, whether or not they have lettering. So, you know, I think it's a sign, I don't think it meets the dimensional requirements. You know, the prior hearing and this hearing point out one of the real disconnects. I, I, you know, think Olaf, who was up here earlier, was very sincere about wanting these, the commercial kitchen to help boost his property. And I think Philippe is obviously sincere about wanting this gift in front of his place. But, you know, people pass the zoning bylaw by a two-thirds vote after a hearing. We take an oath to enforce it, and then people say, well, you know, it's a great restaurant, it is, I've had my best meals there. He's a great chef, he's gracious, why don't you look the other way? Well, you know, I can't do that because I take an oath to enforce the zoning bylaw or to apply it. I think this is a sign, I know you've asked for a variance, this is not a case for a variance. There are four criteria or five criteria for a variance, and this would not meet a single one of them. So, you know, I would vote against it, sorry to do that, because I think it's a great restaurant. I would also point out to you, and this is just subjective, I think this sign at that busy corner will be a distraction to drivers, especially drivers scooting down Route 6. And, you know, especially if it's lighted at night, and it may present a hazard, I'm not an authority on hazards, but it, it could be a distraction. But, you know, folks need to change the zoning bylaw if they want to do these things, in my opinion. And I'll apply it as written, but that's all I have to say.
Rita?
Well, first of all, I, I did want to know, if it's lighted, what are the hours of it being lighted? Because it could be very distracting to neighboring properties.
It, it is proposed to be lighted, it has sort of like, sort of string of kind of Christmas tree type lights that wrap around it. You know, I think we're open to the hours that the board would want to impose as a condition. So I don't have a proposal tonight in terms of what those hours are, but it's something if the board wanted to discuss, it'd be happy to discuss.
And this is a request for a variance, and that is a bit of a problem.
So, I respectfully think there are variance conditions on this property, and I know a lot of properties don't have them. But, you know, the first criteria is, are there unique soil conditions, is there a unique shape, is there a unique topography? And this is, in fact, I think, one of those unique properties that has all three of those. There are unique soil conditions on this property, there's a freshwater-isolated wetland on this property, which is a unique soil condition. There is unique topography, there is a substantial difference in grade on this property from the road as it drops down to the wetland. And it's uniquely shaped, if you look at it in comparison to other properties in the immediate environment. It has frontage on two roads, and it's irregularly shaped in general, not just in addition to that frontage. So I think it actually does display the variance criteria that is set forth under the Act.
Do you agree?
Come on.
Do you agree?
No, I, I've said what I have to say.
Manny?
What else? Well, I love the Eiffel Tower, I just don't know.
And I mean, the other thing I would. If I could say, in response to Bruce's comments, while I understand that the zoning bylaw says what the zoning bylaw says, it also gives the board the ability to grant variances, and that is in your bylaw, from any provision in the bylaw. So when the zoning bylaw was adopted, that provision is in here, it's, it's in, in the state zoning act as well, and the board does have the discretion to grant variances from the provisions that are in the zoning bylaw.
But given the conditions that Massachusetts puts on a variance, it is clear that the point of the variance is to give relief to someone who simply cannot have the building on, on that.
I disagree with you on that, I don't think that's what the case law says.
That's exactly what I'm sitting here thinking, a variance is so that
Variance is so that.
Somebody who has a, has a lot that they can't otherwise build a house on, or they have to build a house for whatever reason, has to be taller than normal, the variance system allows them to, to, to do that. I don't think the variance system is intended to say, we have a wetland on our property, therefore we have to put in an Eiffel Tower.
Right, that we have a wetland on our property, therefore we have to put our sign in a different place. That is not, it's not a serious enough, it's not preventing you from doing business. And therefore, I don't think the variance criteria applies in that case, it's just not serious enough for a variance.
I respectfully disagree, I don't think that's what the cases say. And in fact, there are cases that say, as it relates to dimensional variances, that there can be a lesser hardship than, for example, a use variance, where the case law is more strict in terms of what the hardship relief needs to be. You know, I, I, I think I'm hearing what the board is saying.
We haven't gotten to Manny.
We haven't gotten to everyone.
We haven't gotten to Manny.
Manny?
No, I believe it's a sign. I mean, when, when it says here, draws attention to, it's one of them. I mean, who's, who's going to drive by and not see it? It's 27 or 28 feet tall, tall.
21.
21 feet tall.
On a six-foot base.
And then being lighted, of course it's going to draw attention. And I would like to see it there, but our bylaws do not, with these bylaws, unless you change them, I don't think you can do it, I don't believe that. That's all I got.
So I was on the planning board when we revised the sign bylaw a couple of years ago, and I, I think it's a sign. However, you and Ben are incredibly persuasive. And I'm, I, again, I don't get a vote on this, but, and I'm on the fence, but I have a real problem with it being lighted. I, I don't think it should be lighted. And that's, that's all I have to say.
Will?
Yeah, on the, I, I don't get to vote on this, hopefully it lets me in the building tomorrow. In law, my zoning 101 in law school taught me that, if I remember correctly, it was a long time ago, but variances were really designed to avoid the taking issue. So the state didn't end up saying, you know, or the, the landowner didn't say, you've zoned me out, so buy my, buy my property. But I, would you, I'm just curious, would you explain again why you think you're not an, an object? Because when I just first read this, I read, it says, any object attached to the ground, attached to the surface, which is visible to any member of the public, which intends to advertise directly, invite, announce, or draw attention to the use on the, on the premises. So when I first read this, I said, it's not a sign to me, but I'm willing to, as I say, I don't have a vote, but I'm willing to be convinced otherwise.
So I don't read that as saying any object, I read it as saying any display of objects. And so I envision it's, you know, it's a grouping of objects together that collectively make a sign. A single structure, I don't think is a display of objects.
The letter S is what makes, is what makes this a difference.
And, and the word any display, which I think goes with that.
No, it's, it's the, you're, you are interpreting this law, this sentence, as saying that everything after the of are all objects of that preposition, so of lettering, of logos, of pictorial matter. I think that's not correct, but I don't know, because I wasn't on the planning board, but I do see the grammatical reason why you say that.
Yes.
Exactly, that's, that's not how we intended it, in my opinion.
I, I don't feel any different about this than I did the last time we heard this case. That, and I think it qualifies as a sign, I don't see how an Eiffel Tower in front of a French restaurant is not intended as some form of advertisement. I, I, I feel for the fact that the neighbors all seem to support it, but I don't see, I don't see how we can get around that.
Yeah, we haven't closed the hearing yet.
First of all, on the sign question, I, I have to agree with Liza, you know, there are so many things in town that are objects, and we live in a town full of art, people put sculptures in the front yard, and what you're basically saying by holding that this is a sign, is saying that Philippe is the only person in Wellfleet who can't put an Eiffel Tower on his property, if you think about it. Because if I wanted to buy a 21-foot tower and put it on my property, I'm a crackpot, right? I, I love the Eiffel Tower, I love going to France, I love it, I saw it, you know, I want to spend, I can do it, it's not a sign. I'm not attracting people to come visit me at my house. You're saying that because Philippe is French, and because he has a French restaurant, he can't have an Eiffel Tower.
It's good, Ben, but not terribly good. It's a good start, but I don't think it works.
It just struck me when I sat there, that in reality, you know, he has, he has a couple of options, he can appeal this, and I think he'll win, you know? And knowing Liza, he will win. You know, you could, you could petition an article at a town meeting to clarify this, this bylaw. But, and I also disagree that the variance criteria are required to keep you from having a taking of your property. That's what the Massachusetts Constitution's all about. The variance criteria just says that if you're going to suffer a hardship, financial or otherwise, is what it says. So it's a fact question for this board as to whether or not, if he doesn't get the relief, it's a hardship to Philippe, financial or otherwise. And, and we do this all the time, we commit for variance, and you say, well, you know, maybe if you built your house a little bit smaller, we'd give it to you. So you're always balancing that little question of a financial or otherwise. So, you know, I, I do think they've met the standard, but I just wanted to raise that point about, about the tower. Thank you for hearing me again, I know I'm laboring this, thank you.
Okay, and I am in the same place I was last summer, it's a sign. So, I guess my question for you is, do you want us to go ahead, I have a feeling we're going to turn this down. Do you want us to go ahead and turn it down, so that you can then take it the next step, if you want to?
Yeah, I, the instructions I got were, he wants a decision on this tonight, so. Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to.
I figured as such.
Right, so I'm going to, unless it.
We'll close the hearing and go to findings.
Okay, so, I need a second?
We have to do each one individually.
I, we did.
We did.
We did.
Yeah, second to go to findings.
All in favor? Okay, now, this is for that you've moved, you want to go to findings for the special permit, right? Now, do we have to have a special, do we have to have a motion for each one, to go to findings for each one?
I would think so.
Yeah, I would think so. Okay, so we're now on the motion for the special permit.
For 2002.
2002. This is an application for a special permit under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2 to construct what the applicant terms an art installation within the pre-existing non-conforming front setback from Le County Hollow Road. The lot is in the commercial district. The resident, restaurant is entitled to treatment as a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming structure, having been in existence for at least 10 years, as provided for in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.2.2. I didn't go back and figure out how many years. The existing non-conformities regarding the structure are intrusion into the front setback, intrusion into the side setback, building coverage in excess of 15%, and inadequate frontage. The proposed art installation would increase the lot coverage and would further intrigue into the front setback. The board has determined that the claimed art installation of, of a replica of the Eiffel Tower meets the definition in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 7.2.1 of a sign, which is any display, do you want me to read the whole thing, or shall we skip the definition, I've got the definition here. As the Eiffel Tower replica depicts an iconic French symbol, and the business is a French restaurant and bakery, clearly the art installation will function as a sign to advertise the business. Additionally, the Eiffel Tower replica would draw attention to the applicant's French restaurant. As the Eiffel Tower replica would function as a sign, it must conform to the signed bylaws provided for in Article 7 of the Wellfleet zoning bylaw. The claim that the Eiffel Tower replica is an art installation does not exempt it from the requirements of Wellfleet's signed bylaw as provided for in Article 5. The board finds that the proposed installation would violate the signed bylaws in the following ways. It would increase the aggregate total square footage of signage beyond the 64 feet allowed. The installation is. The installation is proposed to have internal illumination, which is prohibited under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 7.7.3. At 21 feet on a six-foot base, it violates height requirements of no more than 10 feet, as provided under Wellfleet zoning bylaw 7.6.3. After considering district objectives for the zoning district as provided for in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 3.2 and the relevant criteria set forth in Wellfleet zoning bylaw 8.4.2, the board finds that the applicant has failed to demonstrate that the benefits of the proposal will outweigh any adverse effects on the town and the vicinity. That's what I got. Anything I should add?
I think it sounds good.
I move to accept the findings.
Second.
All in favor? So then I, now I'm in murky water. Do we go to the next findings, or do we deny the special permit?
What you want to do is move to deny the application for a special permit based on the findings.
Yeah. I will move to deny the application for the special permit based on the findings.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. All right. Now I need a motion to go to findings for 20.3, the variance.
So moved.
I need a second.
Pardon me?
I need a second.
Second.
Okay. All right. This is an application for a variance from Wellfleet zoning bylaw 7.6.2 and 7.6.3, signed area and height, to construct a claimed 27-foot art installation Eiffel Tower. The applicant seeks relief from section 7.7 to allow for said installation to be lighted. The conditions for granting a variance under Massachusetts General Law 40AS10R, and I'm quoting them, do you need to hear it? Okay. The application does not meet the requirements for a variance. There are no unusual topographical features on the lot, and the absence of a claimed 21-foot art installation would not create a substantial hardship. You can debate that one. Any changes to that one?
Pardon me?
Any changes to that one?
Fine.
Okay.
Move, you're done.
I'm done. That's it. These are short.
Move to accept the findings.
Okay? Second. All in favor? Okay. Then I will move to deny the variance based on the findings.
Second.
Yeah. We need to vote. All in favor? Okay. Now I need a motion for 20-4, the variance.
So moved.
Okay, go to findings.
To go to findings.
So moved.
A second. This is an application for a variance from Wellfleet zoning bylaw 5.4.2, front setbacks for a claimed art installation located approximately 27 feet from the property line abutting La Count Hala Road. And I didn't go into the whole thing before. I said, as per above, the application does not meet the requirements for variance. Accept those findings?
I'll move the findings.
Second.
All right. All in favor? And then I will move to deny that variance based on the findings.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, Scott is answering. Okay. You're done.
I'll let him arrest me again. Well, done.
Oh, he'll let me in.
I have some other guests.
Let's know who I am. All right. All right, we don't have Carolyn. Well, we'll carry on without her.
She's here. There she is. Hey, there she is. Carolyn, come on and down and join us.
All right, I'm calling 2001 Cape Cod Cannabis, Wellfleet LLC, application for a special permit under 5.2 and 5.3.2 for retail use in the commercial district and for approval of development of significant impact. Yes?
I'm going to recuse myself for this.
Trevor has recused himself. The board for this will be myself, Manny, Retha, Will, and Janet. I would introduce. I have to ask the chair. Want to take a quick break, or?
We, no. The applicant has some additional paperwork they'd like to forward.
Okay. All right.
Slides that were printed out.
Are printed out there, of course. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Does anybody need a revised stamped site plan?
This is from, this is the 2013.
Yeah, the one that you just.
Is it any different? Is it any different?
I believe we did, yes.
It's what was in my packet?
It was the one that was marked like this.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I believe so. I believe we got that. Who's, who's, who's on it?
Yep.
Um, fourth. Can we just? Okay. Thank you. You just want to make sure everybody has.
Received this plan.
Okay.
This is the 2013.
I believe so.
Very good.
You tell me, okay? I have everything.
Quite a few.
So, oh, these are, no, these are previous ones, I think. I think.
So this is, this is one we're submitting that was from the 2013, was actually surveyed and stamped, just to make sure we have that requirement.
Okay.
Actually, that may be, that's it.
This is it.
It's the existing.
Correct.
It's the existing.
Well, this was, yeah, I mean, this has the.
It's what's there now.
This is 342020.
43.
43. Yep. 2013.
This is one that was drawn and stamped.
I see.
Probably won't reference this one. I gave that to you already.
All right.
Now you have one. Thank you.
All right. I think we are ready for you. We've got the list of who the board is. And I did want to apologize for last month and the confusion on the butters list. We'll get that fixed.
Sounds good.
So you need to introduce yourself and your team, and tell us what you're doing.
Yes, so my name is Alan Cronfle, and I'm the CEO of CC Wellfleet &amp; Lee. We're doing business as Cape Cod Cannabis. And just to tell briefly about the team, and we set up this slide so the public can see them as well. We have here also Simon Baker, who is the CEO, Larissa Cavaleva, who is the CFO, and Daniel is our VP of Retail Operations. I can just say briefly that together we have a quite diverse experience in retail operations as well as in the cannabis industry, accounting and state reporting. So the project that we propose is a adult-use marijuana retail store in the former general store in South Wellfleet. We propose to have the store open initially by appointment only, and access will be for customers 21 years of age or older. And we'll go over the proposal in more details in the following slides, but I would just like to point out that our main intention is to mitigate any negative impact that we might have on the neighborhood and just advocate and support a proactive approach to health management in Wellfleet.
And my name is Jill Schaefer. I'm the attorney for Cape Cod Cannabis. So I wanted to just start with some overview of cannabis in Massachusetts to date. This slide is from the CCC's website. It shows the number of licenses approved by county. As you can see, Barnstable has five approved as of January 10th. I believe that is still accurate. But if you go to the next slide and look at the cannabis retailers, this is just retail stores, or they could be co-located medical and retail, but this doesn't include just medicals. But this shows that as of March 9, 40 retailers have opened. And as you know, in Provincetown, Cure Leaf just recently opened. And the last slide shows of, oh, I'm sorry. So then we have the proposed Outer Cape. So this is showing you how Provincetown, Turo, Wellfleet, and, is that Eastham? Yeah. Have proposed seven, four, and two retail cannabis retailers. The point sort of being that once more than Cure Leaf is open, and once more than, you know, the several in Wellfleet are open, the traffic and the parking and all those complications are going to lessen. So right now, with one open in Provincetown, I'm not sure the status of Nature's Alternative or the Old Bank here in Wellfleet, but we do have four retailers proposed in Wellfleet. And then I do believe the Atlantic Medical Partners was medical only, and I'm not sure if they're still, so I'm not sure if they're still in process of opening. But the point here, too, is that, you know, with four stores open in Wellfleet eventually, again, the traffic and the parking and the major concerns that have been raised to date will lessen, just in general. But we did do a comprehensive traffic study, and if you can see from our site, the overview with respect to traffic in, traffic out, and I believe our traffic expert would like to explain more of that litigation.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the boards. George Ryan, traffic engineer, on behalf of the applicant. This is existing, this is existing conditions aerial that kind of shows the proposed location. And as, you know, we may elaborate more on the site plan further, the, you know, it's important to note that the building's remaining in the same location, the curb cut's going to be reused, and, you know, the addition of parking in the rear will be included to support the establishment. And so when we did a traffic analysis to evaluate, you know, both safety at this location as well as net new trips and what the impact could be to the surrounding area, so I'm sure there will be, you know, questions as we progress, I'd like to kind of hit a few key points. And the traffic study that we've submitted focuses on the summer hours in the Cape. And it's important to note that that is, you know, the busiest time, and as sure as everyone knows, traffic in the Cape can almost double from Memorial Day to Labor Day. So all the numbers and figures of, you know, impact, percentage increase in traffic are all based on summertime hours. And we found that, you know, off-peak, no, exclusive of Memorial Day to Labor Day, this, you know, proposed, proposed use really will not have a negative impact on traffic, and overall volumes will be lower than even the summer volumes without this use. You know, where, you know, so for context, we're, you know, estimating 46 new vehicle trips on the weekday, 16 during the AM peak and 18 during the PM peak. And the overall traffic volume on Route 6 and La Count Hala Drive in this area, you know, exceeds 10,000 on most days. Route 6 can hit 20,000 on a busy day. And this net increase, you know, equates to less than 2% volume on Route 6 and less than 10%, you know, even down to 5% on La Count Hala Drive as well. So there's no major, there's no changes to the traffic flow operations. There, you know, will be a slight increase in peak trips and daily trips as a result of this going from the Wellfleet General Store, which was a retail use, to a cannabis retail use as well. The, you know, one of the, you know, big mitigation measures that the applicant has agreed to is to go by appointment only when I first opened. And that was a, you know, great thing for traffic because it allows, you know, the applicant and the owner to control traffic going in and out, control hours of operation, what, how many visitors may come during an hour period, and gives them the flexibility to really work with the community and the police department to, you know, make sure that this, this area remains safe and supports the businesses around it. And, you know, furthermore, I think that, you know, considering a lot of the points that Jill made with future retail stores opening in and around the Outer Cape, you know, the applicant is also committed to what we call a post occupancy traffic study, which will measure traffic flows throughout the summer and be able to adjust their operations as needed, you know, in coordination with the, with the town departments and specifically the police. There's plenty of more detail, and, you know, I think we'd like to continue with the presentation, and we'll certainly be open to questions when they come up.
Thank you.
Who's on next?
My name is Matt Cristiani of Illine Architecture. Just wanted to walk people sort of through the site plan and the parking that we are proposing on the, on the site. So, you know, all the parking calculations are based on the retail parking calculation use, which is, you know, and you'll see this on, you know, on the site plan. It's going to be, you know, one parking space for 150 square feet of floor area of each establishment. So we have three businesses on the property. There is the, you know, it's going to be Cape Cod Cannabis, which is going to be the main use of parking, and then two existing businesses, which are the Beach Comer Store and the Little Capistrano Bike Shop. I'll start, actually, I'll start with the smallest bike, or the smallest, I'll start with the bike shop, then I'll move to the Beach Comer, and then I'll talk about our shop. So looking at the Little Capistrano Bike Shop, there is a total of 422 square feet of floor area and 150 square feet, or 150 square feet per parking space. That equals 2.81, so we've allocated three customer parking spaces. We've also accounted for up to three employees at that business, and again, by the bylaws, it's one parking space per three employees, so we've added one employee parking space. So we've allocated a total of four parking spaces for the bike shop. On the plans dated, let's see, on the site plan dated 3420, which was approved by the planning board, there is a key in the bottom left that shows, you know, how each parking space is allocated on the site plan. So the bike shop is an LC-1, 2, 3, or 4, and those are the ones outlined in green. So you can see the four parking spaces on the site plan for those, for that business. Moving to the Beach Comer Store, we have 835 square feet of floor area, which equates to five and a half parking spaces, so we have allowed for six customer parking spaces. We have also allowed for up to six employees, which equates to two employee parking spaces for a total of eight for the Beach Comer Store. Those ones are BS-1 through 8. They're the blue outlined parking spaces on the plan. For Cape Cod Cannabis, we have several different types of parking spaces. We're going to have employee parking spaces. We're going to have 30-minute limit parking spaces, 15-minute limit parking spaces, and two handicap spaces. Those are designated on the site plan. The 30-minute limit parking spaces are the orange ones, C-30-1, 2, et cetera. The 15-minute limit parking spaces are the red parking spaces. They're all up front, next to the handicap parking spaces, C, I'm sorry, they're 10 minutes, C-10-1 through 6. And then we have employee parking spaces, which are the purple parking spaces. The calculations on that, we have a total of 3,917 square feet of floor area, which equates to, you know, 26.1 or 26 parking spaces for customers. We also have, we're allowing for up to 24 employees, and again, that equates to eight parking spaces for the employees. And we have divided that, we have, I think, five 10-minute parking spaces, and the rest allocated is 30-minute limit parking spaces. So we have a total of 34 parking spaces for Cape Cod Cannabis. On the site are an additional two parking spaces that were requested by the planning board. So that gives us a total of 48 spaces on the site.
Sharon, could I ask a real quick question? I'm just curious. On the legend on the site, it says you have 3,917 square feet of first-floor area space, but on the plan it says 3603?
So that, the floor, I'm sorry, I actually should say, not first-floor area, it should be floor area. So we are included several hundred feet on the second floor that are going to be used for office space for employees.
So that's what the 39 includes the second floor.
Yeah, total, total floor area.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah. All the parking spaces are nine feet by 20 feet, aside from the handicap parking spaces, which do meet the handicap regulations. And again, I think we have a total of 48 parking spaces on the sites.
Pardon me, Sharon, can I make a request?
Yes.
My meter is not picking up your voice as well, so I would appreciate it if you would talk into the microphone or bring it closer.
Move it closer.
Because I'm not getting a good recording, and I know people. area space, but on the plan it says 3603?
So that, the floor, I'm sorry, I actually should say not first-floor area, it should be floor area, so we included several hundred feet on the second floor that are going to be used for office space for employees.
So that's what the 39 includes the second floor.
Yeah, total floor area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah. All the parking spaces are nine feet by 20 feet, aside from the handicap parking spaces, which do meet the handicap regulations. And again, I think we have a total of 48 parking spaces on the sites.
Pardon me, Sharon, can I make a request?
Yes.
My meter is not picking up your voice as well, so I would appreciate it if you would talk into the microphone or bring it closer, move it closer, because I'm not getting a good recording, and I know people are going to ask me for coffee service.
Sure thing, I'll just get a little bit closer to it.
You can push it, push it closer to you.
Yeah, I got the paper there, I didn't want to...
Everybody's kind of...
How's that?
There you go. Okay, thank you.
Right, so, you know, the float when you pull onto the site, we're going to have a single entrance and exit, which is going to be the same entrance and exit to the existing, you know, to the existing site as it is now. Obviously, the Beach Comer and the bike shop parking are, you know, sort of directly closest to their businesses when you pull into the site. Most of our, you know, Cape Cod Cannabis parking is going to be to the rear of the site, and we have intentionally put the employee parking on the upper parking lot, since that is up the hill and harder to access. So the employees will park sort of up the hill around the back to try and reduce the amount of traffic, you know, from customers that's going to go up and down that hill. We also do intend to pave that hill, you know, to prevent, you know, erosion over time and make sure that holds up as well as possible. And I believe the plan is still to provide a shuttle for employees, especially in the summer when the employee number is higher, to limit the amount of employee trips to and from the site, especially since if it does move to having 24 seasonal employees, we obviously don't want to use 24 parking spaces for the employees, so they will park off-site and be shuttled to the site by, you know, a Cape Cod Cannabis employee.
Can I ask one question? Was there an area for parking that was going to be closed off at a certain time?
So the planning board requested that we attempt to close off at least the rear section of the lot to prevent people from other businesses parking there, parking there before, you know, any of these businesses open, and then taking up the required parking for any of these businesses on our site. So you'll see on the parking site, on the, on the plan, between parking spaces LC4 and BS7, there are three removable parking bollards that will be placed, you know, in those locations to prevent anyone from accessing the rear of the site and blocking in the parking once any of the businesses open. So that is, that's...
So that will happen every...
That will happen every night or whenever the, whenever the business, whenever, you know, Cape Cod Cannabis is closed. There will also, Memorial Day to Labor Day be a parking attendant at all times, you know, when the, when the businesses open, to ensure that only, only patrons of, you know, the businesses will be parking in these spaces, to ensure that they're parking in the correct spaces for the correct amount of time, and to ensure that, you know, there is no loitering of any kind on the site.
Sure. So this is just a quick layout of the proposed store, and it shows the nice big waiting area and the flow of how the guests will be going through. Sure.
I'm going to bring the mic with me, and I'm going to have it here. Much, much easier. So the main entrance, so this is going to be, you know...
It's okay, we can follow.
I think it'll be okay. So, you know, this is, this is the state parking lot here, and this is the sort of the Route 6, you know, that, you know, we're coming off of, so all of the main parking space is going to be back here, so patrons will come in, they will park, and they will walk around to the main entrance here. There will be a security person, you know, a, you know, a security person hired by, you know, by the store that will stand outside and check IDs of every patron before they enter. It will be a secure locked door, and they will have to be let in by that security person. Once their ID has been verified, they will walk inside, and there is a waiting queue here and a sort of lobby reception area where, once again, their ID will be checked if they want to be added to the system. So if they, if they want to be out of the system, so at some point they can... Hmm? Yes, if they, so there will be a pre-order system, so if they want to be able to pre-order, they'll be able to do that in the future. But, you know, once they've been checked in, there is this large waiting area, they will wait until their name has been called on TV, there will be a queue, and there will be a locked, secure door here, again manned by security personnel. Once, so once their name is called, they will be let through the security door into the main retail space. There will be up to 10 sort of customer specialists, where they will go consult with the retail specialist, choose their product, pay, and they will exit through this exit, which will remain locked at all times. So the idea is that there will be no loitering outside, we have an interior waiting space, and we want to make sure that we have enough capacity that, you know, there, that there's enough waiting space for all customers, and that, you know, we won't, we won't have any, you know, any loitering anywhere outside of the building. I think the exterior of the building will remain essentially as it is now, we plan to do very little work on the exterior. We will have some decals on the windows, and our plan is to replace the existing Coca-Cola sign with a sign that reads Cape Cod Cannabis, and at the moment, that is the only new signage that we are proposing on the other side of the building. Other than that, it will just be repairs and painting.
Okay, and this, this slide just shows the 500-foot buffer zone and demonstrates compliance with the CCC Rule Regulation that a school, an existing school or private school cannot be within 500 feet. And then Cape Cod Cannabis maintains that they will bring a dynamic and new business to Wellfleet and bring hopefully new business to town. And there are a couple of neighbors in support, the Seaside Liquors and Blue Willow Fine Foods and Bakery have both expressed their support for Cape Cod Cannabis to locate in this site. And then the next, one of the main concerns at the beginning of the entire retail cannabis establishments coming into Massachusetts were the security concerns. And in Massachusetts with the, up to 40 now that are open, those concerns have really not come to fruition. It has actually been demonstrated that in the areas where retail cannabis establishments are located, crime has actually gone down, and there are national studies to that effect also, based on other states. I think one of the reasons is the CCC Regulations are very comprehensive, and to actually even open, you need to have all of their security regulations met, and in that sense, these are just sort of a list of some of them, but in that sense, that's really one of the concerns that started out with all of these establishments, that really has not come to fruition. So I just wanted to point that slide out with security. And then I know another major concern is prevention of diversion to minors, and that is another concern that has not come to fruition. With redundant ID checks throughout, there's not a possible way a minor or someone under 21 could get into a marijuana establishment. And studies have also shown that in the areas where cannabis retailers are located, there's been no increase in teen use. In fact, teen use has gone down. So I know those are major concerns, and I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that Cape Cod Cannabis has addressed them and will obviously continue. They, yeah, and then, oh yeah, and then we're going to have to get to the benefits. So with regard to the community benefits and positive impact that Cape Cod Cannabis could bring to Wellfleet, so job creation is possibly one. I mean, they plan to hire locally, and in addition, use local vendors and contractors and suppliers for their project. The host community agreement that's in place gives 3% of the gross sales to the town of Wellfleet to abate any possible, any possible negative impact. The group plans to implement educational programs, participate in the neighborhood, just be a good neighbor, a good civic neighbor, green construction practices, of course. Like I mentioned, the enhanced security, and, oh yeah, one last study. I mean, I brought a lot of studies with me, if it gets into the, you know, questions as to, you know, what some of the implications and ramifications of a cannabis retailer in town could cause, but one thing that I wanted to point out was cannabis access is actually associated with a reduced opioid consumption in the general public, and that goes to the, the studies that show that patients at least that are using the opioids and if they can use a cannabis product in addition to the opioids, their relief is much greater and has shown to be a reduction in the need for the opioids.
Yeah, just the final slide is basically the timeline for opening, so we are already in March, and we believe that once we get the ZBA approval and once we get our provisional license, we would be within three months of opening, and possibly that is the beginning of the summer.
Through the chair, can I just ask one question? Lighting would be a big concern for neighbors and everybody else, I guess.
Well, our hours of operation are 10 to 8 on Monday through Saturday.
I'm talking about lighting.
Yeah.
Around the building.
Yeah, and we will shut off all the lighting once we close, so that is 8:00 PM.
Do we have anything on lighting?
I think what we're looking for is a lighting plan, you know, that you're going to have down lighting or up lighting.
I think we haven't submitted a specific lighting plan, but I think it will be, you know, aside from sort of the existing lighting, which is very minimal on the site right now, the majority of the lighting would be out front, sort of facing towards that existing state parking lots, and the lighting up the back would be as minimal as possible, just to make sure that we provide sort of a safe, so that we, that we light the rear lots to provide a minimum safety. And we wouldn't, you know, we would certainly make sure that, you know, the, the light generated would, would, would create the least amount of light pollution as possible, so, you know, low to the ground, down lighting.
Is that good enough for the board?
I think at this point, the presentation is finished, we go to the audience.
No, I mean on the lighting.
I mean what?
Do we need a plan or we don't?
I'm going to ask the lawyer on that.
For lighting?
For lighting.
You can certainly request one, yes.
Yes, we can. Okay.
Okay.
So, all right. No, we're going to go to the audience first, because I think we've got a lot of people here who want to speak, so. If anyone is here from the audience, you should go to the microphone, identify yourself, and...
My name's Thelma Blakely. I'm a neighbor, I live across the street from the General Store. So I'm here with other family members and neighbors tonight. I'm a lifelong resident of South Wellfleet. I grew up right around the corner, like I said, from the current General Store, and I've seen a lot of positive changes over the years to the neighborhood, such as the opening of the PB Lingerie over 10 years ago, and the Blue Willow before that, along with additions to both the General Store and the post office. We're a small, friendly, family neighborhood in the heart of South Wellfleet, and we want to preserve the safe and family-friendly feel of our community. Pot shops typically draw a mixed crowd, many of whom linger just outside the premises. Now, I know they talked about security, but I'm not seeing anything really concrete here. Legally, we cannot chase people away in the public spheres, but this is just one of the many reasons why we object to the granting of a marijuana dispensary here in South Wellfleet at the General Store location. In addition to the negative change in atmosphere such a business would create, several other serious concerns bring me here tonight. Liabilities the town might face resulting from a pot shop in this location, insufficient parking, and haphazard traffic flow. First, potential liabilities related to this location. The former General Store is just steps away from the Cape Cod Rail Trail, a state park where families with young children ride their bikes at all times of the year. The proposed extension of the bike trail from that location would bring even more families to the area. The majority of states with legal marijuana dispensaries require distance buffers of at least 300 to 1,000 feet between dispensaries and places associated with children. A buffer clearly not possible in this location. I have measured the distance, which amounts to about 25 to, excuse me, 30 feet from the rear of the building. I'm concerned about the sale of marijuana at such proximity to so many children. A dispensary here would not only create an unhealthy environment for them, but any consumption of drugs in the area would also increase the risk of accidents. The trailhead, the trailhead is filled with cyclists, walkers, cars entering and leaving. It's a very tricky area to navigate safely, and any rise in impaired driving of cars or bikes could lead to tragic consequences, as we've seen all too often with alcohol problems. Relatedly, even though marijuana is now legal in the state, smoking or possessing it on national park property is illegal, and federal property begins just a short walk around the corner from the store. I and many others are alarmed at the security issues related to marijuana dispensaries, which are well documented by other states that have legalized the drug. Such dispensaries rely primarily on cash, produce disorderly conditions, and draw people from far outside the community with no attachment to Wellfleet, creating an increased motivation and opportunity for crime, break-ins, break into cars, whatever. As others have mentioned, parking and traffic near the former General Store are other huge concerns. This location is used heavily during the summer season, even with the General Store closed now. People park there for the post office, the liquor store, the Blue Willow, the Chamber of Commerce, and the beaches. They park there for the beaches, they walk down all accounts, meaning that residents have to search for more parking spaces from May to September. If they're filling all these parking spaces that they're talking about in back with their employees, all their staff, whatever, I mean, it's not going to change anything, there's still not going to be enough parking. There's currently no monitoring of that lot in the summer. It sounds like they are planning to monitor it, but, you know, it's just, it's a very congested area. Given our annual dune erosion at the beaches, every year with, there's fewer and fewer parking spots at the beaches, which makes a big demand for people to park at these lots, like PJs, you know, they have a problem there as well. As for traffic, it's nearly impossible to exit from the area onto Route 6 during the summer months now. Opening a marijuana dispensary there would make traffic conditions unbearable and even more dangerous, especially with the number of cyclists and children in the area. I've seen many, many close accidents there, and without all this extra traffic. The intersection at the top of the hill was designed in a way that cannot support any more traffic, and it has not been eligible for a traffic light due to the curve in Route 6. The line of sight there is very bad coming around the corner. Like I said, I've seen a lot of, I've seen fatalities there. It's extremely difficult to access Route 6 from La Count Halle Road now, which includes cars from the beaches, the Beach Comer, PBs, combined with backup traffic from the post office, the Blue Willow, Seaside Liquors, and the Chamber of Commerce. Although a traffic officer has at times been there at the intersection, I haven't, I haven't seen one there last year, and it may be due to budget constraints or staffing constraints, I'm not sure. Given these location-specific... Given these location-specific concerns, I urge the board to prioritize other locations for a dispensary, such as the old bank on Main Street, where the traffic is safer, more manageable because of the set of lights at that corner. Parking is ample, and the building is freestanding. No other businesses located or connected with that building or the lot there. I'd like to note that at the ZBA meeting in November 2019, the representatives from Natural Ventures were shockingly unprepared, with no specific parking plan, traffic study, or security plan. How long will this board accept continuance after continuance due to poor preparation on the part of Natural Ventures? As an abutter, I was never, never informed of any community outreach on the part of Natural Ventures regarding this proposed establishment. I feel the strategy on the part of the owners from the very beginning has been sketchy and vague. As an aside, I think the community deserves to know everyone involved in this, and I see they're all here tonight. In closing, I'd like to say that I've never come before the ZBA to oppose changes in the neighborhood, but I would ask that the board recognize our neighborhood's strong, very strong objections to the negative changes this dispensary at La Count Holo General Store, at the general store, would mean for our community in terms of atmosphere, traffic, parking, safety, mostly safety due to the bike trail being right there, right behind it, and the close proximity to all the private businesses and the National Seashore. So I really would appreciate and respect that you consider denying this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Blakely. Mr. Blakely.
Hi, I'm Richard Blakely. I, uh, I think that these guys have gone overboard a little bit tonight. I, uh, they are right up against the bike trail, which is, you know, children play there. So it's a playground in my estimation. And, uh, and if not, we'll find out in court. Chloe gets the bus right in front of that pot shop. Her and her other people, the little kids from school, get the bus there. I don't think any pot shop, no kid should be getting the bus near a pot shop. And the parking they say that they control, I've seen, is in the lease for the bike shop. The bike shop has always had that upper parking lot. Now, what happened to that? They've been moved out. They don't have any parking? They're just taking parking wherever they can find it. You know, I'm against this pot shop from the get-go. I don't want these slugs in my town.
Mr. Blakely, can you just be respectful of everybody?
No, I really can't.
Well, I'll need you to do that.
No.
Kathleen Bacon, Wellfleet Select Board. First, I'm going to start with this. This came to the Select Board in February 2019. Natural Ventures, David Pike, gave a very wonderful presentation to the Wellfleet Select Board and introduced his team. With the exception of Simon here tonight, there's not one other person in this configuration that was before the Wellfleet Select Board. So the point I want to make about this is when we give a host community agreement and we meet these different groups, we are meeting you. We are interviewing you. We are seeing you at a table, and we're trying to figure out who you are and what your commitment's going to be to the community. I don't know any of you. You're not who I gave a host community agreement to, which I have a draft copy of. So I have a problem with this. It's not now, it's not Natural Ventures anymore, it's Cape Cod Cannabis. And again, you know, I have to reiterate, if you want to go back and look at the tape on the Select Board meeting where David made his presentation, I'm very deeply offended by this logo. It's like, welcome to Cape Cod, here's the cannabis. Come on, guys. Switch this out with something else. Right there on the highway, we have a sign that says, welcome to Wellfleet. And this is what you're mimicking. How many appointments do you intend to generate within an hour? How many appointments? 60, 70? Nobody mentions the post office as a business. You realize how many people, how many Wellfleet residents use that post office on a daily basis? And that sees a lot of traffic. You mentioned doing business by appointment only. Is that how you're going to start the business off? You're going to operate that way for, what, a month? 90 days? How about if the town says to you, that's how you operate 24/7, by appointment only? That's how I'd like to see it. And you haven't mentioned buses. We got a lot of buses here in Wellfleet. Kids park somewhere up in Dennis, they come down from Braintree, they use the beach. You haven't mentioned a bus. What are you going to do when a bus comes in there? Those are my questions as a selectman. But this is the biggest problem I have right now. Thank you.
Hi, good evening again. Again, my name is John Nealan. I'm here tonight on behalf of myself and my wife, Lorraine. We own properties on the Count Holo Road, just up the street from the proposed location of the new business. You're going to hear a lot tonight, I think, about traffic and congestion and those types of issues, all of which are very valid and all of which we support as being an issue before the board, which really needs to be considered. I'd like to take a little bit of a different angle, though, and ask you to consider something differently. So to state the obvious, Massachusetts General Arch, Chapter 48, Section 9, Regarding Special Permits, gives you, the ZBA, the full authority, of course, and discretion in considering special permit applications. In effect, the legislature has made you the stewards of Wellfleet's public good relative to zoning. Specifically, when considering a special permit application, the Wellfleet Zoning Bylaw 8.4.2.2 gives you, the ZBA, the power and the authority to consider the activity type and mix of a proposal before you vis-à-vis the diversity of services that are available locally. That's in the bylaw. My understanding is, under consideration, there's a, there's another pot shop about a mile down the street, under consideration, which I know has been before you, because we attended a meeting several months ago at the bank at the intersection with Route 6 and Commercial Street. So quoting, again, 8.4.2.2, the question for you is, the board, tonight, to consider, is whether this proposal that you're hearing tonight contributes to the diversity of services available locally. Respectfully, our opinion is that it does not. And on that basis, we would respectfully request that you deny the petition before you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nealan. Mr. Reed.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Attorney David Reed, and I represent William &amp; Joy O'Connor, who own the property at 90 La Count Holo Road, which is the first lot behind this property after you cross the rail trail. It is a residential property and it is in the residential zone. First, I have a series of questions, not so much objections, but questions to things that I kind of expected to see here tonight, but didn't. We also, like the board, had questions about the lighting. As I recall, what's there in the back now is what I think is called a Cobra Head Lamp. It's on the top of a telephone pole. It's not low, and it's not controlled lighting. So obviously, if the gentleman's reference to be, to having low and controlled ground lighting is what they plan, I don't believe that's what there, is there now. So I think you should have further information about what is proposed. I also had a question about the second floor above the store. My understanding that it is that it either is or was an apartment. We've heard reference tonight to the fact that they've included that in their calculation, at least I think that's what they said, for the parking calculation. But that didn't appear to be the case on the face of the plan. If that square footage is included as part of the business, then why have you not been presented with a floor plan and a description as to what's going to be done up there so that you can confirm that that's the right area and therefore the right parking calculation for the business? With respect to the other businesses on the site, again, with reference to parking, they've based the parking calculations for the bike rental and surf rental operations on the 400 or so square feet of the two shacks, which I think you approved back in 2004, if memory serves me. But I've heard nothing about the four trailer buildings that are there now. As I recall, they've been there since the shacks were built. They are an integral part of those businesses. I don't know exactly how they function, but it seems to me they may have an effect upon the parking calculation as well, since they're the functional equivalent of an enlargement of the shacks themselves. With respect to the sign that's proposed, I know they're not asking you for any relief for the sign itself. But they have included the sign in their presentation to you, both graphically in the plans and in the narrative presentation to you. And it indicates that the sign is to read, and I think they had the logo up early in the presentation, Cape Cod Cannabis. But as I read the state regulations on their marketing and advertising constraints, you're not allowed to use the term marijuana or cannabis in the advertising or business logo for the business. Now, I'm not asking you to enforce state regulations, but it's before you, and I wouldn't want anyone to assume that you had tacitly approved that by not saying anything about it in your discussion. Lastly, by way of the questions, like the chair, I think it was you that asked a question about the appointment only, how would that work? How many people would it, I guess, maybe perhaps it was you, ma'am. How many people would that entail? And how long would it continue? And who would decide when it was going to cease to be the requirement? As I glean from the information they've provided, there will be 10 point-of-sale stations. 15 minutes or less is their estimate for the average customer time for an appointment. And they're going to be open 10 hours a day. And they'll have some of their appointments by less than 15 minutes, because people can call ahead. I assume that's returning customers. But that's something in excess of 700, excuse me, 400 customers per day on the appointment-only schedule. I think it's important for you to know whether that's an accurate prediction. And conversely, once they go off the appointment-only schedule, how many customers will they service per day? Because it'll be more, I presume. Or at least you should know that. So our, our concerns now, after just our series of questions, if you will, are primarily about traffic and safety related to traffic, as some of you have already expressed. I've not seen the March 2020 site plan that they referenced as was approved by the planning board. That wasn't in the file when I last looked in the board's file. But the plan that was there and that was filed with you initially shows a series of new parking spaces in front of the building, where the planters are now. So as I understand it, people would be pulling into those spaces, and then when they leave, they're backing out into the state highway before they leave. That, I think that's rather extraordinary, if you approve parking spaces that would have to back out into a state highway in order to get off the premises. As far as I can determine, that stretch of road there, the Crescent, if you will, in front of this building, is still Route 6A, or at least the Old King's Highway that was there before the highway went through. It's still shown in the plans as part of the state highway layout, and from the description of the zoning district, is described as being Route 6A. On the issue of traffic.
Excuse me one second, Sharon. Could I ask you to repeat? I don't understand what you said about old Route 6A.
The road, if you will, the Crescent Road that comes in off of Route 6.
The access road.
I believe is the remnant of Route 6A.
Okay.
And I think it still holds that status.
Okay.
Actually, to be perfectly correct, I think it was originally Route 6, and then when Route 6 went through, it became 6A, but the same highway. In terms of the, of the traffic, with respect to the gentleman who presented some of those findings, I don't think they've really done a traffic study. I think he's given you a traffic report with his predictions of what this business will generate in traffic. But a true traffic study, they propose to do after they open, in my understanding. But taking what you have before you for what it is, they project initially something like 480 vehicle trips per weekday and per Saturday from this business. I assume that's based upon the appointment-only scenario, because that coincides pretty nicely with the calculation that I went through earlier with the point-of-sale and the time range. They indicate in Table 2 that the average marijuana dispensary should generate more than 1,000 vehicle trips per day, based upon the size of this site. But in Table 3, and I don't pretend to be a traffic expert, I'm just trying to digest these numbers in the simplest form that I can grasp to put it in perspective. They actually project that this business is not going to generate 1,000 per day, like the average marijuana dispensary would, but only 675 vehicle trips per day. And they also project, based upon tables, that a variety store of the same size as the general store should generate approximately 199 vehicle trips per day. I don't know if that's appropriate for this actual general store, whether they have any counts to show what it generated. But take those as they are for averages nationally, I guess. But that's an increase from this site alone of between 475 and 800 vehicle trips per day on average. If you take just the appointment-only scenario, it's about a 200% increase of what's there now. So either way, it is a significant increase in the amount of traffic that could come out of this site in one direction, because there's only one way out. So they propose to do a traffic study, but only after you grant them a special permit, and after they build the business, and after they start and operate a business for six months or so, I think was the suggestion. So what will that tell you? If they start with the appointment-only pattern that they've offered and that I think is appropriate for you to consider? The study, study done after the fact will tell you what the appointment-only scenario does. It won't tell you what the unrestricted business will operate, or how it will impact the neighborhood in the intersection. So I guess you're going to have to do a second study, once they go to the full operation, to tell what really is going to happen out there. But what are you going to do with that information? If you've already granted them a special permit, and they're already in business, and the site is already built out, as much as it can be, what are you going to do with the traffic study if, for example, it confirms the neighbor's fears? That this is not going to be a good operation? That this is an impactful operation that significantly deteriorates this intersection? What can you do if they've already got their special permit? One of the solutions for mitigation that they propose, that was not discussed tonight, but is in their written presentation, is that during peak hours, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM during the summer, they propose to instruct their patrons to turn right onto La Count Holo Road and to follow a prescribed route that they will give them a map for to get back out to Route 6. So they'll pass through the parking area for the rail, rail trail parking area, through the La Count Avenue residential neighborhood, into the National Seashore, up Ocean View Drive, back out Cahoon Holo Road to Route 6. That's a trek of over four and a half miles. If anybody does it, I suspect they won't do it more than once. But the last thing the residential neighborhood wants is more traffic coming in their direction, rather than less. And the last thing the rail trail needs, or the And the last thing the rail trail needs, or the National Seashore for that matter, is more traffic being overtly directed in their direction from this site. And incidentally, as someone has mentioned, the mere possession of marijuana in the National Seashore, including on its roads, is illegal. When the Provincetown store opened last month, the superintendent of the National Seashore was quoted in the paper as saying that "any possession of marijuana is not legal on any of our roads or property." So how can you, as a condition for mitigation of the problem created by this traffic, excuse me, how can you direct them to do something that is illegal for them to do, the customers? The special permit criteria require that they demonstrate, and you find, that the benefits of this project to the town outweigh any adverse effects to the town. And it's a list of things that you should consider if and when they are appropriate to the project. But I would ask, everything we've talked about tonight, how is that going to benefit the restaurant across the street, the residents immediately down the road, the families that use the bike trail, the National Seashore and its guests? How are they going to be benefited by this project? The road system seems to be inadequate for the current demand. I don't think you need a traffic study to tell you that. You may want a study to quantify it for you, but you all know that the headaches that exist, and the neighbors have already attested to them, at that intersection, at peak times during the summer months. Not just from this site, but from the entire area, including some very popular beaches along Ocean View Drive, funnel out through this area. How is that situation to be improved or benefited by this proposal? I would suggest that it's not. And please note that your special permit criteria ask you particularly to focus on seasonal consequences, what happens mostly during the summer when there's the most amount of traffic. Each district in town has a description in the zoning bylaw in Section 3.2. Excuse me. The commercial district, which is where this is, indicates that it is to provide for small and moderate-scale businesses, quote, "at the same time," close quote, "avoiding creation of hazards or congestion." It's to balance the need for small and moderate businesses against the need to avoid creating further congestion and hazard. Let me go back now to the beginning. The special permit requires under 8.4.2, quote, excuse me, the board, quote, "shall not grant a special permit unless it finds that the benefits of the proposal to the town will outweigh any adverse effects on the town." It is significant that your special permit criteria is written in the negative. Most are the other way around. Most special permits are written with some formulation that they shall be granted unless something is found. But yours is not. Yours says you cannot grant a special permit unless they demonstrate to your satisfaction that the benefits to the town of this project outweigh its adverse effects. We would suggest that that's not the case. This is not, as they suggest in their written memorandum, filling a need that is as yet unmet in town. While the stores are not open, you've already approved two, but I think of both within a mile of this location. And I've heard reference to a third being in the process somewhere. I don't know where that's going to go, but on balance, from the comments you've heard from the neighborhood, from the comments you've heard from your select person, from some of your own questions so far, we would respectfully suggest that the benefits of using this site for this use do not come even close to outweighing the disadvantages and the adverse effects that it will create. And we would ask you to deny the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. E. Sir. Please tell us who you are.
Hi, I'm William O'Connor. I am at 90 La Count Hollow. My family's been coming to Wellfleet since the 1930s. We own a house on Ocean View Drive. In 2006, my wife and I were lucky enough to buy the McGuire Place, just behind the general store, which we've been fixing up. And, you know, as the neighbors have said, the neighborhood has gone through a revitalization, I think, over the past 20 years. The biggest concern I have is the traffic on that road already. It's very difficult to get out of there on a morning or afternoon on most summer days. The sightlines are awful coming around that corner on Route 6, so somebody said that you can't put a traffic light in there because of that. Half the time, people are taking a right-hand turn out of La Count Hollow Road, going up and turning around in the dentist's office there, and then coming back around. It gets so bad because you can't get out. This is going to just create a nightmare scenario in the afternoon. In the afternoon, I'm a quarter mile down the road and backs up to my house now with people coming off the beaches. And the idea of telling people to turn right is ludicrous, because if they do turn right, they're going to then turn into Kincaid, or they're going to turn into the bike path, or they're going to turn into Richard's driveway or my driveway, and start doing U-turns to pull back down the street. Which even if they don't tell them, if they can't get out, people are going to start doing that, when they can't pull up onto La Count Hollow Road and make that left into that short, tiny, little section that you have from where the end of the driveway is. The parking, I'm just not convinced that the parking is accurate. People are going to park in the bike path. They can't stop them from parking in the bike path. There's already people who park there now, who go to the beach, who take other trips. People are going to be coming to the bike path, there's not going to be parking there. It just doesn't seem like they've got enough parking there. It doesn't fit with the neighborhood. The general store's been there for over 100 years. That hollow is the center of the South Wellfleet neighborhood. This type of business is not, does not fit with what's been there and what has historically been there. We wouldn't want a national chain coming in there. You know, we have the zoning laws for a reason. We don't want something that's not, that doesn't fit with the character of the community. And will it have a detrimental effect on the neighborhood? It's going to have, definitely going to have an effect on our property values. Being next to a pot shop is not going to help, and it's certainly going to hinder the property values of our local neighborhood that we've worked so hard to raise. And just an anecdotal story, my daughter lives directly across from the NEDA marijuana dispensary in Brookline Village. That has gone in there. People are leaving that dispensary. You can't smoke or use the product in public. So they go in the alley behind her building, and they're smoking, they're vaping, they're urinating, they're leaving all their trash in the alley behind her building. There's no control of where people are going to go and use this. They're going to be coming onto the bike path. They're going to be coming onto the bike path, they're going to be coming onto the trail that leads to my house, they're going to be in Richard's backyard. And, you know, I was here in November, spoke in November against it. It's a whole different group now. You asked the folks at that point to reach out to the neighbors and find out what their concerns were. There's been radio silence from anybody, apparently except for they've reached out to the people that they think will support them. They've reached out to the liquor store and the bakery, because the bakery's going to get all kinds of business, people having the munchies as soon as they leave the place. But they haven't talked to any of the neighbors. They have not reached out to any of us to say, you know, what are your concerns? So I don't think they're being good neighbors. I don't think it's at least the third group of people, this cohort, that have, that are trying to establish this shop there. You know, I just worry about how, if you grant the permit, how responsive are they going to be at that point to any concerns that we have? This is a whole new industry to the town. I urge you to take things slow as you move forward. I know you've already approved two sites that have passed the appeal process, and they are going in. This site is wrong for all lots of reasons. I ask that you not allow any continuances, and you vote to reject this proposal tonight.
Thank you. I will ask you, just in the interest of time, if, to limit to what we have not already heard from the neighbors, if you could, just so that we can get through tonight at some point.
Appreciate that, but I've been waiting 25 years to make these remarks, so I will do so.
I understand.
And I will obey your orders.
And would you state your name?
Be happy to. My name is Jay Curley. I received the notice of this hearing as an abutter to the property. I just want to take you back a moment. Back several years ago, when I was about 26 years of age, I had my first opportunity to get beyond Dennis, Massachusetts, and went into Wellfleet. We rented a property in Eastham. I rode the bike path up to La Count Hollow, took a right and went to the beach, and said this is where I want to be. Thankfully, several years after that, my wife and I had the means to buy a second home down here, and it's been terrific. I agree with everything that has been said this evening, so I will not repeat it, and I appreciate that. But I don't want that to be lost, because I sincerely agree. I want to take a different perspective. I've had three children that have been raised as young kids in the Wellfleet summers and whenever we can get down here on vacations. They have been using that bike path since they learned how to ride their bicycles. Each one of them used that parking lot as a place to learn how to ride their bicycles. They've gone over to the post office several times with the key to the post office box and got our mail for us, and on occasion got some muffins and other things walking through that parking lot. This is not the Wellfleet I want. This is not the Wellfleet that children should witness. Please keep in mind the safety of children as you're thinking about this. I don't want any of you to be looking in the newspaper several months or years from now and be remiss with the decision you are making tonight. You know the importance of this. Professionally, I've worked in the public sector. I've sat on high-level committees in the State House. I've had private sector jobs where I interact with government officials. I appreciate what you have to think about. Health and safety is most important, and children's interest in the playground of Wellfleet is what you should keep in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate your sticking to a news topic.
Okay. Nice and quickly, Janet Reinhardt, Chair of the Select Board, we do need updated information, corporate information, who your Board of Directors are, your addresses. I know you've changed your name, can't find it anywhere on the internet, so please, so you're going to have to re, we need that, so you ain't going to go anywhere unless we get your up-to-date Board of Directors and addresses. And I know you also have to go to the state for this too, but your host agreement isn't value, valid until we get the update. And I do know a couple of you, more than one of you, so I know there's some, but very important.
Thank you, Liza Cox. I live at 35 Kincaid Street, so I'm an abutter, my house is an abutter to this property, and my family, as you know, owns PB Boulangerie Bistro. We're here in opposition to this request. I'll be brief, because I also agree with all of the comments that were said previously. I also wanted to mention, and Richard did as well, but this is where my daughter and her friends get on the bus and get off the bus, right in front of this location. We also play weekly on the bike trail, right in this very area, and I just don't think this is the right use, given that the children are in that area every day. In addition, from a traffic perspective, it is very challenging with PB in the afternoon. And frankly, and thankfully for PB, the afternoon peak hour, when the beaches are emptying, is not the restaurant or bakery's peak hour. It's actually our slow time of the day in the summer. But even so, there are cars that are backed up all the way past Kincaid Street where we live, so customers cannot get into PB, into the parking spaces. I can't imagine adding another use with a PM peak hour generator in that area. Traffic will be a nightmare. And so, again, we just wanted to go on the record in opposition to this. I don't think, under the bylaw, that this is a suitable location for this proposal.
Thank you.
Barbara Kennedy, I live in Wellfleet Village. I did not vote for marijuana in the first place. I don't need a high from marijuana. I get my high living in the beautiful village of Wellfleet. Now, they proposed to put one next to Dunkin' Donuts. They proposed to put one in the old bank on Bank Street and in the yellow bank. So that's three. I don't know how they're supporting three. Maybe I'm very naive. But the one on Bank Street, that's where Plymouth and Brockton bus go, the Flex bus goes, and the Peter Pan bus. So I don't know how, where they would park or anything with all those buses down there, and that's supposed to be one of the places. Thank you.
My name's Michael Moran. I have owned a house on 25 La Count Hollow, which is right across the street from the parking lot. Just a couple of comments. I agree with everything that my neighbors have said. I don't think that these applicants have done their homework. There's just way too many unanswered questions. Secondly, as far as the traffic, the only thing I'd like to point out is that intersection of La Count Hollow and Route 6, every car between here and Provincetown has to go by that intersection to get to somewhere else. So that is a choke point, and so there's got to be a better place to put this shop than there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I spoke before, if I could, you obliged me to make one more point.
Okay, be quick.
I will be very brief. My understanding of the proposal is it's by appointment, and on its face, that would sound like a benefit to the town, that it's just going to be by appointment to mitigate traffic and parking issues. But think about it for a moment. With that big Cape Cod Cannabis sign looming over the roof of the hundreds, and sometimes I would get into the thousands on a Saturday, coming down Route 6, the only people that are going to know it's by appointment only are the people that called to make the appointment in the store. The hundreds of other cars coming down are going to pull into that parking lot, they're going to get out of that car, there's going to be a consultation with the patron parking patrons and the security person. We want to buy, we want, no, you can't, appointment. I don't believe the traffic report has accounted for the hundreds of other cars that will pull in, because they will not know it's by appointment only. And I would ask you to consider that as well.
All right. All right. I do, before we take the next step, I am, I have two letters in support of this project that I need to read.
I know, I.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Blakely.
My name's Richard Blakely, and one of the letters is from the woman at the bakery. And I dare say.
Mr. Blakely, I really can't let you get into personal attacks on.
I'm not attacking, I'm telling you what I was told by the woman that owns the bakery at the Blue Willow. They told her they wanted her to do all kinds of baking for their place. Well, she knows, and everybody else knows, that that's illegal. So I don't know what she wrote, but that's what it was about, and it's not right, and it's not right what they're doing.
All right. So, but I am going to read the letter anyway. There are two letters. This one is from Seaside Liquors. Ladies and gentlemen of the Town of Wellfleet Planning and ZBA boards, as a longtime community member and business owner operator, I gladly support the opening of the planned cannabis retail store owned by CCC Wellfleet NV, located at 1446 State Highway, South Wellfleet. I had the opportunity to meet with some of the owners and management, and believe they have the best interests of our town in mind, and will help contribute to the revenues and overall welfare of our community and those of its immediate business neighbors. With the creation of the additional parking spaces behind the facilities, we foresee no issues in sharing parking with this new store. I appreciate your consideration and look forward to soon adding this new business to our community. And that is Alan Kogos of Seaside Liquors. The other is, somebody else want to read for a change? Somebody else want to read for a change? Janet, you want to read this one?
Oh, me, sorry.
Sure.
Okay. This is from Barry Hasman, the Town of Wellfleet and the Planning Board and ZBA. Dear members of the Planning Board and ZBA, my name is Barry Hasman, and I am the owner of Blue Willow Fine Foods and Bakery, located at 1426 US 6 South.
located at 1426 US 6, South Wellfleet, Mass. 02663. I've had a chance to talk with some of the management team of CCC Wellfleet NV and believe that the opening of a cannabis store would possibly benefit my and the nearby businesses by attracting new potential customers to our retail plaza. Certain conditions need to be met. The South Wellfleet Retail Plaza is home to the South Wellfleet Post Office. The post office is frequented daily by local residents, many of whom are elders. It is important that the parking directly in front of, and in parentheses, abutting the building, the post office, and again, parentheses, and adjoining buildings, be fully available to residents, not for customers of the cannabis store. Secondly, given that there may be a significant increase in traffic, there needs to be someone monitoring and controlling traffic. This area cannot become a speedway. Safety is of paramount importance. Thirdly, we would like to be apprised of the onsite security during the store's business hours. Given the proximity to the bike path and youth, we would like assurance that no cannabis product will be used on the premises. I would also like that all of this be reviewed in the beginning of the summer tourist season to ensure that the measures are still effective. If the above conditions are met, I would like to express my support for the opening of this marijuana store, and I hope that you share my opinion. Regards, Barry Hasman.
And the other letter we have, because this is an application for a development of significant impact, is from the Planning Board, and I believe I'm to read that letter. Dear Zoning Board of Appeals members, at their meeting on March 4th, 2020, the Planning Board unanimously voted to send their approval to your board advising you that they have reviewed the new parking plan for Cape Cod Cannabis LLC dated February 27th, 2020. This plan includes a point of access in the area between parking spaces identified on the plan as LC 4 and BS 3. Removable parking bollards that will be constructed to close the back parking area after the cannabis retail location is closed each day. These will remain in place until they reopen. There will be hardening in stone on all parking areas. There will be a wood retaining wall placed on the slope at the upper parking area parallel to Cahoon Hollow Road. The access driveway between the lower parking lot and the upper parking lot will be paved. All the above are shown on the site plan. There will also be two parking attendants on the premise during business hours. The Planning Board believes that Cape Cod Cannabis LLC has met all the principal and accessory requirements of the Zoning Board of Appeals parking requirements. Should you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to the Planning Board Secretary, and she will contact us. Thank you for your time and consideration for this matter. It's signed by the entire Planning Board. So... I go to the board, I believe. Yes. Bruce.
Questions or just comments?
Questions, comments. The meeting is still open, so...
No, the meeting's open.
Yeah, the meeting is open.
There was a discussion about the number of shops, just so everyone's on the same page. There are two shops that have been approved by this board and have host agreements with the Town of Wellfleet. One is located in the old TD Bank and the other, the old antique store next to Dunkin' Donuts. Whether they will get approval from the Cape Cod Cannabis Commission, I don't know. Two shops are at the same stage in Eastham. One in the old, I call it the dog store, where the... in Carew, there was a shop that sold dog treats or something. And then there's another one on the east side of Brackett Road. Just a comment. The traffic, whether this store will bring lots of traffic on Route 6 or not, who knows? You know, Yogi Berra said you can predict everything except the future. But there's one current problem that I don't think was addressed, which is gridlock, like you can only see in Boston or other major cities, on La Cun Hollow Road. And that gridlock results from the fact that cars can't make a left onto Route 6. In fact, everyone who lives here knows during the summer, you don't make a left on Route 6 unless you don't want to live very long. And the traffic backs up. Cars cannot get out of the plaza, the South Wellfleet Plaza. And it's a real problem. I don't think the traffic study addresses that. On Saturday mornings, there was, for part of the summer, a policeman at that corner, never paying any attention to what was happening on La Cun Hollow Road. But he did at least let traffic move, but then they took him off to put him on the beach from the middle of August on. It's a problem, and I think this store and the voting members of the board will have to decide whether this proposal will exacerbate that problem to the point where it'll become intolerable or not. They can make up their minds without any help from me. There's one issue, might get some help from Town Council reconciling. And I think I'm right, there's so much paper here. I think the calculation of parking was done based upon retail area, but I believe the bylaw refers to floor area. And I don't know how that's reconciled. Because they're renting two floors. And I just leave it at that. I think...
All of the parking...
Perhaps Town Council can help us on that one.
If I may, Bruce?
If I may?
If I may? All of the... all of the parking was...
You're assuming I can hold my thoughts, but go ahead.
Sorry. Give me... give me 20 seconds.
No, no, take whatever time you need.
Ready and go.
I'm not that hopeless, I'm pretty close though.
No, all of the parking was calculated based on total floor area. So it wasn't retail area, it was total square footage of area.
Okay, but there was some reference to retail floor area.
No, I'm sorry. It is based on total floor area.
Total floor areas. Of everything that you're leasing.
Of... yes, exactly.
Okay, all right. I thank you for that clarification. While I've got you, where are the 24 employees going to park that are going to be shuttled?
So we do have eight employee parking spaces on the site, on the upper parking lot.
But you said I... maybe I'm a serger. I thought you said there was like 24 are going to be shuttled in.
So I think... so we've accounted for 24 employees giving. So according to the bylaws, you need one parking space per three employees.
I'm trying about where these people are going to pick up the shuttle.
So from their houses.
From their houses.
Exactly. So this is going to be, you know, a Cape Cod Cannabis employee who will pick them up from their houses and then drop them off at the site. Right, exactly.
And the final point I had, and again, it's really perhaps for Town Council, in light of the comments made by the two members of the Select Board, I was wondering about whether the host agreement is applicable to this application. I don't know the answer to that.
Still valid?
That's what I'm looking at too.
Carolyn, that was going to be my question too. If they don't have a valid host agreement, I don't think we go forward.
There's actually nothing in the zoning bylaw that addresses the host community agreement for a recreational marijuana establishment. But they need a valid host community agreement to apply for their license with the State Cannabis Control Commission. So they are going to have to work that out. If that's... if this is a special permit that this board is inclined to grant, you could certainly put in as a condition of approval that that... that the host community agreement has to be updated and approved by the Board... the Select Board.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Teresa?
My comment is, you're asking us for the approval of a development of significant impact. And we have heard from a number of people how this is going to be a negative impact. On your timeline for opening, you have a date, April 18th, that you're going to do a community outreach meeting.
There was April 2019, so a community outreach was held...
Oh, last year?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, I think you have a serious problem with the community that your building is sided in, your business is sided in, from what I've heard.
My problem again is not only traffic, but I think we need to have a lighting... something in writing, lighting plan. And I agree with my two other colleagues. Traffic study, I'm not sure if that is right or not. Congestion, who knows? There's so many things that you just don't know what will happen. And as one of our Select Board members said, that sign too kind of gets me coming in. If you could think about maybe changing that. And that's all I have for now.
I have a couple pages of questions? So if you'll indulge me? Okay. The first question, I'm just going to do these in order of how things appeared in this, okay? So my first question is, you state that this... the Wellfleet store will be an anchor to your planned cultivation and production facility in Mashpee. And I'd like to know if the opening of this retail store in Wellfleet is contingent upon the establishment of that cultivation and production center in Mashpee?
No, those are separate projects, but they will be held by the same holding company.
Moving on. So in the narrative, on page 11 of the narrative that your legal team put together, you said that proposed screening for parking spaces will use native plants. Do we have a landscape plan? Do I know where you're putting screening and what it's going to be?
As it stands right now, there is no proposed additional landscaping, you know, aside from the changes that we're showing on the site plan.
Okay, that's not what your narrative says though. So are we supposed to... I mean, okay. I have questions as to whether...
Yeah, I mean, we're going to remove some of the brush where we have proposed parking spaces. Those are almost entirely invasive species. But as of... as of right now, we do not plan on putting any additional plantings onto the sites.
I have some questions as to whether vegetation around the parking complies with 6.12. I don't know that it does. And I don't know that I should go into... I don't know that I want to go into specifics, but I don't know that you comply with that. So in the interest of time, I'm going to move on. So I don't see any sign calculations. And you have a lot of... you have a lot of signs going in here. You're talking about a sign at every parking space? I don't know how that figures into our sign calculations. I would also draw your attention to Section 7.6.3.1 of our signed bylaw, which states, for each premise... Nope, is that the one? Nope, I'm sorry. My apologies. Okay. Scratch that. It's 7.7.5. Any sign which identifies a business, service, project, or activity that is defunct or which has not existed on the premises for 12 consecutive months or more shall be considered to be an abandoned sign and is prohibited. And it's my understanding that that premises has been abandoned for more than 12 months. So that Coca-Cola sign, in my opinion, is abandoned. And I don't... it certainly does not conform to our signed bylaws. And I don't see how you could have that sign. Okay.
What... I'm sorry. If we replace sort of the Coca-Cola sign with a new sign, what about that new sign wouldn't conform with the sign regulations specifically?
Well, you can't have a... well, okay. It's 7.6.3, which talks about the height of a sign.
Yet the new sign will be below the existing bridge of the building.
It's going to be 10 feet. No sign shall exceed the greater of 10 feet in height above the natural grade or 10 feet above the grade of the adjacent roadway.
Okay.
And how you measure a sign, I would strongly urge you to check that out as well. How you measure the area of a sign, because it includes, I think, all the supports above three feet above... Okay. So I think you have a sign issue. I'm also unclear, and I don't know how the building inspector interprets how much signage you're allowed. I don't know if every one of those buildings, those three different businesses, gets 64 square feet? Or as an aggregate total, the three of you get 64?
We assume that as an aggregate total, there would be 64.
Well, that's how I see it too.
Yes.
But I don't... I mean, there's... I don't know. I don't see any sign calculations. So I don't know if you have your signs in order. Okay. So much for signs. Traffic study. I think we'd all agree that if you're the second business to open on the outer Cape, there will be a lot more traffic than if you're the seventh. So in my opinion, you have to have a mitigation plan that is for the worst-case scenario because we don't know when you're going to open, and neither do you. So... Um, let me see. So I'm... okay, let me start again. So you say on accident data that between January 1st, 2016, and January 1st, 2020, there were 11 accidents. And I'm unclear as to where those accidents took place. I can read the section if you want me to.
It's okay. The crash data was compiled for the kind of entirety of the project limit, so that would include the intersection of La Cun Hollow and Route 6.
You're talking about the access road?
Yes. So the access road at the intersection, the access road and La Cun Hollow, La Cun Hollow and Route 6, and the entry from Route 6, if you're heading north, onto the access road.
So you're just talking about basically access road accidents? Where the access road meets Route 6 and where the access road meets La Cun Hollow Road, correct?
And where La Cun Hollow accesses Route 6.
You're talking about the intersection of La Cun Hollow Road and Route 6 as well?
Correct. So all roads that could potentially service the site and the curb cut on the access road.
Okay. So does... and does that include any accidents in the vicinity of the bike trail... trailhead?
That does go to the easternmost extent of the bike path.
Okay, that's... it's just not how it was described, but okay. So the other thing about your traffic report is that I think, the way I read it, you use the term "peak hours" in multiple different ways, and I don't know what you're talking about. So in some places, you say that 3 to 7 are your peak hours. And in other places, you say that 3 to 7 on weekends are your peak hours. And you said 3 to 7 on the weekends would be when you'd be willing to hire a police detail. In other places, you say that you hope to mitigate potential congestion by opening at 10:00 a.m. after peak hours. I don't know what that peak hour... I don't know what you mean by that. And then in another place, you use peak hours that are based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Marijuana Land Use Code. And in the small print, it says those are based on California and Colorado sites that were surveyed in 2010. And those peak hours were between 11:45 and 12:45, and 5:45 and 6:45 p.m. So I don't know what you mean by peak hours where.
So peak hours are, you know, considered an AM peak hour and PM peak hour. So during the day, there is a peak hour in the morning and the afternoon. And then the day also has an overall peak hour, which may be in the morning or maybe in the afternoon. So there's two peak hours each day. And of those two, one of them has greater traffic than the other.
How are you determining your peak hours? You're saying 3 to 7. How did you come up with that?
It's based on traffic counts. So the state, since it's a state road, has traffic monitoring locations throughout the three intersections of the project site that have been monitored going back to 2009. And those measurements have indicated that during the summer months, 3 to 7 is the peak period.
Okay. May I ask you then why you think the weekend will be bigger? I mean, in July and August, this is... every day's a weekend. So why do you think the weekend, 3 to 7, will be... That's when you said you'd be willing to put in a police detail. Why do you think the weekend will be any different than the rest of vacation day?
And I think, you know, hearing some of the concerns of the community and the neighbors may have, you know, kind of enlightened, you know, us and the applicant on how frequent, you know, the congestion is there, you know, Monday through Sunday. And, you know, I think it's been brought up by members of the board and the abutters that there used to be a police detail there. And that, you know, things were better when there was there, but due to funding constraints or whatever it may be, that that detail is no longer placed at that location.
I think they moved it to the beach because we had some issues then.
I'll let the...
Well, I spoke to the police chief, and he also had said, the new police chief, but he had said two chiefs ago decided to discontinue the police detail because the post office traffic was just not what it had been before. And originally, that police detail was to help with post office traffic. And that two chiefs ago decided not to have that police detail anymore. But that was the new police chief's understanding.
I'm a little... well, you've got the traffic data, but I would also tell you that Saturdays... but I would also tell you that Saturday is changeover day, and the traffic is horrendous. On Saturdays, people generally have to leave by 11 o'clock. New people come in around 3:00. That's a big, big issue. Have I used up my goodwill yet? Can I keep going? Okay.
They'd rather hear all your questions now.
So I followed your traffic study all the way until we got to around tables, I think it was 5A or something, where you came up with the idea that compared to existing peak season volumes, the proposed use would result in a minimal increase in both daily and, daily volume and peak hour volume. I read all that six times, and honestly, I think it's indecipherable how you got to that conclusion. So I just gave up, and I decided to go on to your mitigation strategies. So that's where I'm gonna go next. And I wanted to know if you discussed your mitigation plan with Chief Hurley or Chief Pauli? The mitigation plan.
Primarily police details.
You didn't discuss the mitigation plan at all?
He wanted to know mostly about police details, that's all we talked about. And then the conversation was more that we need to go work together, go moving forward.
Okay. So I think Mr. Reed already brought up the issue of, when you're, one of your mitigation strategies is to tell people that they can only turn right between the hours of 3 to 7, and he's already pointed out, so I'm not gonna go through that again.
Like a good plan, exactly.
That's not a mitigation strategy. And also, you're creating, you're just creating a new problem when you're sending people down to Kahoon Hollow Road, which is also a big, big mess. And so if you're gonna do that, you ought to do a traffic study of that intersection as well. Okay, so we covered all that, and I have to repeat that. And you know about the sending traffic into that neighborhood. Okay. I'm almost done. Oh, the other thing I was gonna say, that you said you're gonna have a packet of materials that encourage, about alternate transportation, encouraging people to walk and bicycle and take public transportation. But I would tell you that that's great in theory, but in reality, that's not gonna work. First of all, it's dangerous to bike and walk on Route 6, and public transportation is not really, there isn't that much, and it's certainly not dependable if you wanna get someplace for a specific appointment in the summer. So I don't think that's a really good mitigation strategy either. So I don't think you have a mitigation strategy, or much of one. And I'm done. Thank you all for my time. Thank you. And Will.
I've got a question about 8.4.2. And I've never, I've sat on this board all these years, and I never quite looked at it as closely as I should, obviously. But it says, "We shall not grant the special permit unless we find that the benefits of the proposal to the town outweigh any adverse effects." So I'm sitting here, and I think, what are the benefits to the town? And quite frankly, I guess the only benefit to the town, unless you'll correct me, I assume, is we get 3% of gross sales. But is there any other benefit to the town? I mean, I, I can buy pot all over the place. I grow it myself, you know, so, and many people in this town do. I am not alone. So, and we give it away. So, I mean, plenty of dope in town, you know? So I just wonder, what is the benefit to the town? Because it's not buying marijuana, unless you think that's a benefit to the town.
Benefit includes bringing new businesses to town. Right, and the local employment, the local use of contractors, et cetera. Just having the lively, vibrant, new cannabis shop in town, bringing new businesses to town.
Well, we'll have other of those, but not in, not with the limitations that this comes with the traffic. I mean, I have, you know, because, anyway, I've made, but then it talks about, under the commercial section, it says, is it a benefit, we're looking at the terms of paragraph 3.2, and under the commercial section, it says, "To provide for small or moderate sale business development." So how many cars a day are you, vehicles a day, do you imagine? I know it's in various sources, but just educate me again. How many vehicles a day, when you're up and running full scale, you're gonna have come into your store?
We feel that the maximum amount of trips per day would be 480. And that includes however many people may get there by, you know, employees, shuttle, that's just total trips. And that equates to, you know, a net increase of 46 per day, because I think it's, you know, very important to recognize that we're replacing a retail use, right, which generated traffic, and the general store, if I recall, closed at the end of 2015. So while that may not seem recent, you know, retail uses and allowed use there, and the traffic that would be generated from the store or similar use has to be counted. And additionally, as many people have noted, it is a busy area and a busy intersection. And while that does lead to congestion, and in the current condition, a lot of the vehicles have, are passing by this site on their travels anyway. So there's, if you go up and down the Cape, you have to take Route 6. There's a lot of people noted, if you're going to and from the beach, you take La Count Hollow Drive. And so, you know, we're expecting that a significant amount of trips visiting this site would be vehicles that are already on the roads currently today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. We're in an odd place here. This, you know, the trouble is, this began as a terrible intersection. So, I mean, you do have, like, one of the worst intersections in town. But it also seems like the board's missing a lot of things that they need. And the one that troubles me the most, frankly, is the host agreement, because we've been very clear with everyone who's come before us that we need to see the host agreement accepted by the select board. The other thing that troubles me about those host agreements, just since I have the microphone, is that our job is to, as Will says, to say, you know, this is a diverse, you know, this will benefit the community. And many of us, I think, feel that there were too many host agreements given to begin with. And we are left with the fallout of that, as people say, "Well, how come you have three of them in a one-mile radius?" Well, we didn't authorize those host agreements, someone else did. But I think, from what I've heard from my fellow board members, there are things that they still would need to see. Information about signage, information about lighting, that, a traffic study that understands the problem of La Count Hollow Road and the gridlock on La Count Hollow Road. And you didn't create that. That's there. You have the misfortune to be sitting right where that happens. And, I mean, many of the frustrations with people about traffic are not, not caused by you. But they're there, and you catch the fallout from those. So, sort of where we are, I'm gonna ask town council, because it looks to me like there's no way in earth we're gonna be able to come to a decision tonight. So I don't know quite where to go from here.
Madam Chair, I think you got off to a good start, listing some of the things that you're looking for. Certainly signage, certainly lighting. There were questions also that Member Morrissey brought up about parking, and actually, the building inspector and I were looking at that while you were entertaining one of your prior petitions. It certainly looks like some things existing on this site might be pre-existing, and perhaps pre-existing non-conforming, but I don't see any pre-existing non-conforming analysis done as to parking on the site. And if that is the case, then there is a landscape buffer requirement. I saw the same thing in the narrative, that native species were to be implemented in the site, yet there's no landscaping plan. Is there going to be a landscaping plan? We hear tonight that there is no intention to add plants, but to clean up some of the brushwork. The other thing that I was looking at earlier tonight, along with the building inspector, is the actual square footage that is going to be occupied, because like you, I had some trouble following the square footage and breakdown, especially since there is some reference to use of the second floor. Trying to figure out, when you look at the assessors card and match up what is considered finished upper attic space versus unfinished. The square footage numbers don't all add up, so perhaps some of the upper story square footage is dedicated to the beachcomber. I don't know, but I think we should have that information. And similarly, on the calculation of parking, you're absolutely right that we don't define parking spaces based strictly on floor area or retail floor area. It is actually the total area that a business occupies. And one thing that seemed to be noticeably unaccounted for is 148 square feet known as reception immediately outside of the beachcomber store. And then we have this whole general, this entrance area that I don't even see a square footage attributed to as you come in and can either go to the beachcomber store or can go to this establishment. I don't know how that square footage is calculated into parking, but I don't see that it has been. So I think that there are some things that need to be squared away, as far as that is concerned as well. There was also, I don't see anything with respect to frontage noted on any of the plans either. That's usually something that we would get, and that would be helpful. And I'm just, forgive me, I'm just scrolling through to see if there's anything additionally in my notes that you haven't already hit upon. There was also some discussion in the narrative about monitoring, live video monitoring of the rear parking area off-season, and that areas would be monitored during the peak season. But I don't know that we heard as much about the overall security plan. I know that those are certainly things that get addressed at the state level, but obviously, you've heard some concerns tonight that I think hearing a little bit more about the security plan could assuage some of the fears that residents have. Perhaps not, but I think it is worth having a more robust discussion of that.
I would like, just to say that one of the documents in our package was the security plan, which I think is more than 20 pages long. So it includes quite a lot of information about our security plans and how we anticipate to comply with all the state requirements. As for the square footage, I believe that is all, and the reception area is included in the total space. And I just wanted to address the concern that was with the host-community agreement. We will definitely reach out to the select board, but our understanding is that the agreement is given out to an entity, which at that time was represented by manager David Pike, who, for his personal reasons, is no longer part of the team. I have replaced his duties in the company, as well as Larissa has joined us. But I have been part of the company since March 2018, as well as Daniel Lencioni has been. He moved to the Cape in April. So we wouldn't say that we are coming from nowhere. We just had a little change in the management, but the ownership of the company remains the same. We will definitely reach out to the select board to sort all the issues out, but I just wanted to bring that up. And as for the community benefits, as you pointed out, yes, maybe a big part of it is the proceeds that we are willing to pay for, to the town of Wellfleet, for the impact that we're causing. And it is true that in a location like ours, it's hard to open a business without affecting the La Count Hollow Road, which is already very busy, as everybody in the community has noted. But I would say that if there is no impact, there shouldn't be an impact fee, and we believe that what we are paying should compensate for the impact that we might be causing. And additionally, we have several studies that show that opening of retail cannabis establishment actually decrease crime rates. Happy to share those studies with anybody who's interested in looking into them. And, because this is gonna be a very secured place. It will be monitored 24/7 by two different security companies, which report directly to the police department if anything happens. There are cameras outside and indoors, there are security sensors on doors, glass. There's a vault where all the products are stored, where the business is not open. There are four security guards inside when the store is open. So all these things, I believe, will not drive crime, will not drive crime into the area, because I don't know people who would wanna go into such area where they know everything is very secure and under 24/7 monitor. So we'll definitely address all the questions that have been raised today, but that's just what I wanted to add in terms of security and the impact.
Yeah, I'd just like to make one more comment, because you wouldn't know if you weren't here about the traffic part. This intersection is so dreadful, that in the summer, cars go into P-Town. They go so slowly, that what us, us that have been here around, we go, we turn right there, go down and around and back. And so there's a lot more traffic going where you're coming up, because if Route 6 is stopped, which it oftentimes is, the people go, they turn right, they go up Ocean View, and then they turn back down. So there's, there's traffic that is every which way at times. It's not, and if you weren't here, you just wouldn't know that.
I'd like to, you know, I know it's getting late here, so I'll promise to be quick. I just wanna speak generally about, you know, the traffic study and the mitigation that's been proposed, because it seems to be, you know, a big concern. And, you know, I grew up in the area in Boston, and, you know, I'm not fortunate enough to own real estate in the Cape, but I frequently visit, so I am aware of the traffic conditions, and specifically along Route 6. And, you know, I just wanna point out that the appointment only is a mitigation measure. The police details are a mitigation measure that not only helps support this business, but the entirety of the community and the people using this area. You know, I'm sure that this intersection would benefit from a police detail, you know, beyond the weekend hours and the p.m. I'm sure it could support one more frequently than that. And that's not only a benefit just to this business, but to everybody coming through this area. And, you know, the appointment-only process is, grants, you know, the town and the business the flexibility to control traffic. And, you know, the point was made that no one's gonna know it's appointment-only. That's temporary. When it opens, as any business opens, you know, a little bit of a learning curve, and this one's no different, but that's temporary. Everyone will know, you know, shortly after it opens, how you get in, how you use it. And, you know, management will be sure to, you know, inform customers and make notice when they first open to that extent. And that, the flexibility, I really, you know, can't reiterate enough. We're basing this on 10-point-of-sale systems. If there's too much traffic coming through, 6 can be open, 5 can be open. You can have appointments on 20-minute basis, half-hour basis instead of 15 minutes, and they can be controlled both hourly and off-season, on and off-season. It gives, you know, really ultimate control to the town, the board, the police department, and the business to ensure that the community isn't negatively impacted. And, you know, the post-occupancy study, we have done a traffic study. It is projected. It's based on data that is available in the state of Massachusetts, in the state of Massachusetts. It's based on data that is available in the state of Massachusetts and the country. It's, it is a new industry. There's no denying that. And the post-occupancy study isn't punting or foregoing on doing a study now. We have already done that. What it is, is ensuring that the projections we have made are accurate, and proposing additional mitigation if necessary. And those are significant improvements to this area, and as a tra, as been noted by many of the residents, traffic is an issue. And this, you know, based on the revenue and the use and what this applicant is willing to do, it can be a significant improvement for all the neighbors in getting traffic through there. And so that's, you know, those are very significant mitigation measures that are, that are being proposed, you know, especially regarding traffic and safety and, you know, overall improvement.
I'll ask one more question, then I'll shut up. What, in other words, having a traffic cop out there would be a huge benefit, be a huge benefit to the town, period. So what, how would it be determined when you would have a traffic cop out there? Because that's an expensive exercise, I assume. So how, you know, because, because the neighbors might say, you know, "You need someone out there every minute you're open." And, and that would take a lot, a lot of the problems away. I mean, you know, that might, clear my fear, at least from the, from the traffic port point of view. But I don't, I don't get a sense of, how is, how is it going to be determined what the hours that, that, that the traffic cop would, would be there?
It's really going to be determined by the police department. The police chief is going to work very closely with the business, and they are going to make it as safe as possible. So it will be up to the police department as to when they put them there. And we will pay for them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think, and I, and I did, I guess, I was reminded that I said this in November, but there's an issue with reaching out to the neighbors. And it's been, it's continuing to be an issue. This is, this is the third go-round, and this is the one we've had the most problems from the neighbors, because I think they don't feel heard. And I don't know what you do about that, but that is, that is something that we heard loud and clear tonight. And it's an issue.
I think another community outreach meeting, because the last one was in April, would be a good time to do another one.
And I'm happy to provide my contact information to any of the neighbors. Unfortunately, I don't have their contact information, and I don't think they're very in favor of me just going and knocking on their doors. So I would provide them with my contact information. If they would like to reach out, then I would be happy to talk with them and discuss their concern.
Madam Chair, Kathleen Bacon, if you could just indulge me, just, you know, with regard to the community host agreement. This young man here, where are you from? You've got an accent.
Russian.
You're Russian. Yes, yeah, got a Russian accent.
But I was born in New York, grew up in New York, but my accent's been there.
Question, why we question the host agreements is, you know, we, we were notified by the Attorney General that they were being bought and sold. You know, Wealthly had, we, we issued host agreements to groups, groups that we really sat with for an hour and interviewed. And two of these groups have come back completely reconfigured. So yes, I would suggest you reapply for another community host agreement.
I just want to say that, what, you see me as a manager of the company here. The ownership of the company has not changed since there was a host-community agreement signed, so I'm just a person.
The select board would still like to get to know you, sir. Thank you.
We will, we will meet with you as soon as possible.
Okay. All right, so we've summarized the concerns. Know what we need to come back with. So now the next question, I guess, is, do we continue this?
Well, why don't we find out how much time they think they need to get the material together?
Okay, good idea.
And then decide on a, you know.
Right, okay. And Bruce, you probably don't know, but our next meeting is not April 9th, it is the 16th.
And you're going to be here.
We voted that when you were, without you, but...
Thank you.
What?
We think April 16th is a reasonable date.
Reasonable date, okay.
What is the, I'm sorry, what is the submission deadline? If we're going to, it was going to be April...
Chris, what's the submission deadline for April 16th?
For 9th. Next.
For, for, no, no, I, I will take that back.
Yeah.
I need to have paperwork. I have to look at the calendar.
Well, if it were going to be April 9th, you would need to...
Like the 8th of...
The 8th of April.
All right, so we're going to try to continue to April 16th? Is that...
Yes. Can we get a list, or we'll get that from Chris?
I mean, are, can we, you know...
I didn't take them all down.
I have a fairly good, I have a fairly good account of what we said.
All right, I think I...
We can listen to the tape.
Yeah.
Okay, I can, I can give you, you know, it was the signs, the sign calculation. It was landscape plan and a lighting plan. It was more presentation of the security plan. And then there were a lot of questions about the traffic study, and the question of peak hours, and how it was, would be mitigated and controlled. And then I think the final one that I remember is questions about the actual floor area and the parking.
There was something about frontage, too. Carolyn said something about frontage.
It would just be nice, frontage, yes.
Oh, in frontage. Frontage, yes. Mm-hmm. Yeah, okay. That. I think that's most of them, right? Did you edit it? Carolyn?
I covered it.
Okay, good. All right, then I need a motion to continue?
Move to continue. Well, I'm not on the board, so...
Okay.
I'll move to continue.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? They moved second and passed, that we will continue to April 16th, not the next date for that. All right. And we, thank you?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have me at minutes?
You edited the name February 19th.
Yes, I did. Did anyone look at them?
Yes.
Okay.
Sent a couple of minor corrections to Chris.
Okay, that's right, okay. So I need a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
All right.
All in favor?
No.
And then I need a motion to adjourn.
Prove, adjourn.
Adjourn. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
You.